I can. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. No gavel here tonight. Hello.
Seven thirty, we're gonna get started.
Thank you Debbie. Hello, good evening all, welcome to the Monday, November seventeenth council work session. Appreciate all of our guests joining us tonight. Let's start with Roll, please.
Thank you Mayor. Ms. Connolly? Here. Downs?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Underhill?
Here.
Mayor Hardy?
Here.
And for EDA, Mr. Coyle?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Bregman?
Here.
And for Housing Commission, Chair Anderson?
Here.
And Vice Chair Hicks?
Here.
And I think Ms. Tarasova? Thank you. And Dana, let me know if any HSCAC member comes and I'll note it for the record. Thank you Mayor.
Great, we also have electronic participation for Laura to join us.
Councilmember Downs, could you please identify your remote location and reason for participation by electronic means? And she's frozen.
Right at this moment.
I think I read her lips to say California, personal.
Which is where she is. Okay, well, let's get back to her in a minute. She says she's gonna restart.
There she is.
Oh. You're back.
So if you could identify your remote location and your reason for your remote location, please.
Yes, I'm in Carmel, Bythe Sea, California for personal travel.
Great, I move that City Council approve electronic participation by Councilmember Downs in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the City Council's adopted policy.
Wait a second.
Sorry, go ahead.
Second, Snyder on the second, call Roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you Council, that passes.
Thank you for joining us on vacation Laura.
Thank you.
So, welcome to all of our guests, this is our work session on all things housing, so appreciate the Housing Commission and the EDA for packing it all in with us, so welcome. I think first off, we have the Housing Commission Annual Report unless there's any other preamble.
We do, I'll just give a quick preamble, but if we turn it over to the Chair of the Housing Commission for the annual report from the Housing Commission. There are five items for discussion tonight relating to housing. And so the first is hearing the report of the annual report from the Housing Commission. From there, we'll transition into a series of slides that were in your packet with an overview of the good news on how we have filled our ninety-nine ADUs which came online this past year. We'll give another piece of good news about the progress with our home ownership program in partnership with NHP. And then we will, before, while we're doing that slideshow, we're gonna cover Item D, which is a discussion of our use of CDBG and home funds. And on that one, we're asking for a Council to schedule that for action at your next, at your meeting next week. And then from there, we will provide and expect to have an in-depth discussion about Virginia Village. And we've got sort of a land use discussion and a process discussion for considering Virginia Village. And then the last item related to housing is a discussion of a draft memorandum of agreement between the City and the Economic Development Authority for the ownership management of the existing quadplexes in Virginia Village. So that's what we hope to cover with the City Council tonight, that last item. Also, we'll ultimately come back to the City Council for Council action, but first, we want to just get direction from the City Council, then staff will work with the EDA on finalizing an agreement and bring that back to the City Council. So with that preamble, I'll turn it over to the Housing Commission and thank you for all of your good work and thank you for this excellent report.
Great, thank you for letting us come present, I have heard that I have five minutes, so I will try to go quickly. So, I'm the Chair of the Housing Commission, Meredith Anderson, got some colleagues here with me, Jordan and Galena, we've got one person missing and one new person who's coming on board. But, we will be fully, fully, fully staffed in December, which is exciting. So, given the short amount of time, I don't want to go through everything in detail, feel free to reach out to me if you have questions about anything in particular, but I think I want to focus on our goals for 2026 and as I'm doing that, kind of highlight the continual goal that we have that we're continuing to emphasize is preserving expiring units. And I added a, I included a table that I've included in the past couple of reports, which just shows the upcoming expirations, most importantly, of Pearson Square and the Fields. But also just added, added a graph and just a little bit more information to emphasize how much we're gonna be losing over the next several, even over the next several years. Not to put a damper on the ninety-nine units that we get, but I think it's, you know, it's concerning to see that, given, given the fact that, you know, in the past, we haven't had the continual covenants, if that's been sort of a newer thing, we're gonna see a huge drop off over the next four years. And I think that's something that we want to continue to emphasize is important for Council to be tracking. I think all of us in the Housing Commission think preserving, preserving Pearson Square and the Fields are, you know, should be top priority for the city. It's a huge part of our community and I think that it's, you know, if there's, yeah, there are a lot of ways to do that, we've talked through some of them, we're happy to talk through those more, but I think that's, that's our, you know, we worked on that this past year, a year before, and we're still, still working on that and hope to work on that with you guys. A couple of other things that we are looking to do in 26, so one thing that we have worked on also over the past few years is trying to understand the needs of unhoused community in Falls Church a little bit better. So, we've looked at data across Fairfax County, we've talked with the staff from the homeless shelter, and more recently, we've engaged with Fairfax County who's doing a strategic needs assessment for their unhoused population to try to figure out how we can, how we can best make sure that Falls Church is included, that we get good data from that, and then also try to figure out how we can kind of take that a step further as, as a city to better understand as we look forward to Gordon Road, like what a, what would be some good requirements to define for a new, a new homeless shelter if that's being revision, re-envisioned as, along with a number of other things. I think the, another one of our goals for 26, we've got, got four different things here, aligns well with our discussion tonight. Working to support the creation of an updated plan and timeline to redevelop Virginia Village. And I think continuing to leverage opportunities to acquire additional properties as we sort of think of short, medium, long term. And I, lastly, I'll just highlight that we've tried some strategies for additional community engagement last year and we had mixed success, but I think we are gonna build on some of the, some of what we've tried to do, which is have, we've been able to have a couple of meetings over the past couple of years in community buildings, and we're gonna try to hold at least two this year, which would increase our rate a bit. We did, I did manage to, I did have the opportunity to join the city staff at the Falls Church Expo and provide some information about the Housing Commission and kind of what we do and, and got to talk to a lot of people in the community, both Falls Church and then kind of the surrounding area and hear more about housing concerns in the region, so that was a great opportunity that we had as well. Hopefully that hits the high points, I'm happy to answer questions if there are any, I could answer questions later as well, but I'll just also say thanks to Dana and Kayleen and Brendan for being good partners as we work on housing this year.
Thank you Meredith for the report, and thank you to all of the Housing Commission, I think you're one of our more active boards and commissions, obviously, housing is a shared priority with Council priorities as well, so I think you'll find a lot of alignment between what you kind of said your 2026 goals are and what we think are priorities. With that, questions or comments for Meredith or the Housing Commission?
Erin? I just had one comment, actually. In addition to thanking you all for all of your work, I look forward to seeing like how you can keep Council and the community apprised of your strategic plans as you're developing them, as you're evolving in 2026 versus just once a year at an annual report, I think it'd be great to hear more frequently from you all.
Yeah.
I just wanted to express my thanks to the Housing Commission and your continual engagement, all the work that went into the Affordable Living Policy. You know, I think the emphasis on preservation, you know, is extremely important as much as the new units are coming on, you know, these are established communities, they are units, you know, within established buildings where people are settled, you know, they have relationships with their neighbors, and so we've been talking about, you know, preservation as part of the Council priorities for the last two years, but I think really need to get serious about it in these next two years because it seems like a long, a longer horizon when we were saying 2027, 2028, sunsetting units, and like low and behold, it's now the beginning of 2026. And so I think all of us share the political will to do something along these lines and to ensure that we don't lose these units or we don't, you know, lose by half affordable dwelling units or committed units in the city. But my hope for Council going forward is that we really start kind of putting more pen to paper and figuring out, you know, what are the financial obligations? What are potential routes available to us either within these buildings or potentially like, you know, spending down rents in other places to the extent we need to, if, you know, preserving these units in place isn't an option to us, or at least we need to create options for ourselves so that people aren't, you know, essentially evicted from our community, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I particularly want to focus on the mention about the Gordon Road area. I've worked with the unhoused population for several decades in downtown Washington DC through my church, so I'm particularly focused on their needs and what we can learn about how they became unhoused and, and how we can reverse that process. And I am very interested in ramping up the interest in the Gordon Road area, not only for this, but always, of course, we need to keep the property yard needs in mind, but other potential elements of development up there, not only on our site, but in cooperation with the buyer family. So, this is not limited to a Housing Commission discussion, but also since the EDA is here, I'm hoping that we'll have a community-wide focus on that project because if you add our roughly five acres to the buyer's five acres, you've got the same amount that we had to develop the West End, so, so just, just to throw that out as a potential multiple opportunities that I hope we can develop collectively in the future, again, for three purposes in my view. Better addressing the needs of the unhoused population, addressing the needs of the property yard, and also looking at what additional community-wide amenities could be, could be provided there. So, thanks for mentioning that, putting that in your report, and I'm particularly interested in working with you and developing that as we go forward. And the other elements of, of course, of the report are the result of really a large amount of hard work and it's much appreciated.
Madam Mayor? Can I offer a comment?
I was gonna call Laura first and then I'm happy to get to other members as well, thank you. Laura?
Thank you Mayor Hardy, just two quick things, well, I guess three quick things. My understanding, I just wanted to confirm this regarding the ninety-nine units that we've brought on, those are all, there's no sunset permission on those, correct?
No, not. It indicated that things never expire.
Okay, so I just wanted to put that out there, I don't think, I didn't see that mentioned in the Housing Annual Report, but I mean, I think it's really kudos to those of you who negotiated that, so we're not in that same situation, you know, you're what we're dealing with now. And speak, you know, on that note, I agree with Ms. Flynn, you know, particularly with the Fields. You know, as someone who was on the school board previously, a great portion of our English, English lan, language learning community in our school system resides in the Fields. And so that is really something that's near and dear to my heart, so I do feel that we really, and I know things have been happening behind the scenes with, with Mr. Shields and his staff, so, but we do need to really tackle that. And then just jumping on the, what Mr. Snyder said, I think, you know, even though I know there's a lot out there that we still need to talk about with Gordon Triangle, I think I speak for my colleagues when I say that we at least want to maintain what we have there for our unhoused population, if not expand. I would love to see that facility expanded because I know, I believe it was, they had to turn down, in the, somewhere in the number of eighty people last year from the shelter, so I would love to see an expansion of our own unhoused population shelter there at Gordon Triangle. But thank you very much to the Housing Commission and thank you for this report.
Two quick things, I do have a more technical question about the units we're going to lose, is that something that I should say for a later housing report or should I ask that now?
You could.
I'll try it now.
You could try it now.
Yeah, if you don't have the answer, it's okay. So for the, the units that we're going to use, I was just curious about the gap between, I guess, the rents at some of the lower cost housing units in Falls Church. I imagine that would be something like Merrill House versus like what eighty percent AMI would be. Do we have a census, like how much it would cost for the city to subsidize units in the city so that we don't end up displacing people as these do expire if we don't have any other options?
So, it would probably need to be down to sixty percent because most of these are sixty percent AMI. I mean, that's, that's obviously a more detailed question that couldn't be answered now, but I, yeah. Just want to point out the sixty percent.
So, for example, a sixty percent AMI unit is currently eighteen fifty-six, and if you think of a two-bedroom, you mentioned Merrill House, their two-bedroom units range around twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred a month.
Okay, so that would be, okay, a substantial amount.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
For example, CCAU costs about, was it twelve thousand a month for all the CCAUs? For fifteen CCAUs, and so we have the math on what it costs to bring them down to thirty to fifty percent AMI, and so we probably can figure out the math of what it takes to bring down a market rate unit to sixty percent if we wanted to buy additional units to move the people out into, but that's assuming that's the path we want.
Right, exactly, I mean, I guess, I don't want to say that's worst-case scenario, but it's, it's A case scenario if we're not able to negotiate something with these buildings or we're not able to negotiate things with other buildings, and so I'm sure that there's other creative strategies, but I'd almost like to know what the dollar number would be and so we could start looking at budget things as, as it comes up. But my hope would be, there's something, there's other ways that we can negotiate with, with properties. And then my other comment, I'm so glad that you're holding meetings in the community, I think that that's like something that's really important, and especially for people to recognize that there is a Housing Commission, you know, they might not even recognize that, that there's ways to access the city. So when I was on the Housing Commission, I know that's something that we're doing, and so I'm just glad to see that continuing on, so thank you.
Do we have other questions?
I just want to make a future agenda suggestion for the Housing Commission. In Europe, they're looking back at what they call the single-room occupancy housing, and they're making quite an effort, the private sector, to bring that back. And I was wondering if we should, beginning to look at something like that as a future possibility for us.
Yeah, I think Fairfax City's actually, has actually just did a groundbreaking for an SRO project.
Who did?
Fairfax City.
Okay, so I think that's an option that, given the economics, maybe we need to begin to look at that again.
Good suggestion, thank you. Sorry, I just noticed behind all those heads, Councilmember likes Agan's actually joined us, we can find you a spot at the table, you're welcome to join us at the table too, but. Sorry, I'm gonna call you out in the middle of it, but I just noticed your head there. So I will plus one kind of the comments about preservation, obviously, given everyone's mentioned the importance of preservation, and so I think staff is very much aligned with us on looking at options, whether it's buying additional units, hopefully something more creative for the ninety-six units at the Fields, because that is a source of diversity for not only the school system, but the community. I wanted to call out the fact that you guys were really instrumental in coming up with housing targets as part of the ALP, because I've often said, unless you actually know what your goal is, it's really hard to know whether you're making progress against them, and so we used to always say, we need more affordable housing. Well, I always pushed us to say like, how many and what kinds, what size units, what AMI, and now we actually have those targets, which then gives us a framework of actually developing strategies like SROs, like more work at Gordon Triangle, so thank you for your work and all the analytics that went behind the housing targets. I also appreciate that on the Housing Commission, you've really tried to live our values, and so you have created space for renters to actually serve in the Housing Commission to make sure that perspective is represented, so thank you for doing that. And then also plus one on the community engagement, I never want kind of only hear from residents when we have issues. So for example, we heard Broad Falls had an issues with their landlord, and they didn't know where to go, and so I love the idea of actually rotating to our different buildings, so again, people know that they have a presence and can be represented, we can advocate more for them for their tenant rights, and so keep that up, and to the extent that staff or Council can support you on that, we're happy to do so. Okay? I think that's it.
All right. So we'll segue now into an update for the Council on a host of our Affordable Housing Programs. Before we do that, if I could just take a moment to thank our small but mighty housing team, and Dana leads the team. Dana has to keep so many balls up in the air at one time, and just thinking what this team has accomplished over the past year. Kayleen has stood up the CCAU program, has filled about ninety-eight years or more this year, and we've developed an ALP, the Affordable Living Policy with Brendan's leadership, and Brendan has been advising us on the Fields and on the Virginia Village and sort of the, the real estate aspects of that and providing that deep analysis and expertise. The whole team is just really an amazing team, so thank you Dana and thank you to the whole team. So we'll turn it over to you for, for this update.
Thank you so much Wyatt for those kind words. We are a small but mighty team, I appreciate that. I know most of you guys, but for those of you who I don't know, Brendan Woodley, Housing Development Specialist, here today with my colleague Kayleen Mark, Housing Specialist. Tonight, for you, we have a robust agenda that includes high-level updates on many housing initiatives that we've worked on, many of the ones that Wyatt has just described to you, that we worked on over the last year, as well as zoom in on some of those items that helped guide us for some of the questions we have, moving or thoughts we have on those projects for moving forward. If you want to go to the next slide. So, giving you a quick overview of the housing agenda, first Kayleen's gonna talk to you guys about those affordable dwelling units, those ADUs, as well as the city committed affordable unit programs, then I'll give you some updates on the Virginia Village, our federal grants, CDBG and Home, Affordable Home Ownership Program. Give you kind of some of the successes we've already had with the Affordable Living Policy. you kind of some of the successes we've already had with the Affordable Living Policy that was adopted back in August. And then we'll close out with a look ahead on some of the items on the horizon for the housing team as well. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and pass the mic to my colleague Kayleen Mark. She'll talk to you about some of her items.
So the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program or the ADU Program, it provides below-market rate pricing for rental units throughout the city of Falls Church. The ADU rentals serve households with incomes ranging from 40% to 110% of the area medium income, or AMI. AMI is the midpoint of a specific area's income distribution and is calculated annually basis by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. And according to HUD's 2025 standards, the current annual gross income limit for a family of four within this range is $65,560 to $180,290. So for example, a two-bedroom unit at 40% AMI pays $1,238. A one-bedroom unit at 60% AMI is currently $1,624, and a two-bedroom is currently $1,856. The program currently has a total of 189 affordable units, and those units are located at North Gate, 455 Tinner Hill, Pearson Square, West Broad Residences, Madera Founder's Row, Verso, which is for 55 and over, the Reed Building, Broad and Washington, the Alder and Madera Falls Church, or which sometimes people call Founder's Row, too. Within the past year, we added 99 units to our ADU portfolio, and we started at 40% AMI and also our first time for having studio units in our portfolio. We currently have 81 units of those 99 units, which is at 81.82%, and 14 of those units are occupied by city employees and Falls Church Public School employees, which is about 17.28%. From the total of 189 units, 32 of those units are occupied by city employees, which is about 17%. The vacant units that we have are on the 80% AMI level. We have 14 studios at Broad and Washington, and four one-bedroom units at 80% at Madera Falls Church. Units that are smaller in size with a higher income level, they have been a bit difficult to rent as households with higher incomes on our waitlist. They need larger-sized homes. HHS is tasked with compliance monitoring for all of those units, which includes all certifications, annual auditing, and training for onsite staff. And our other rental affordable program is the city committed affordable unit, or the CCAU program, which is a subsidy program for market rate units to low-income households earning between the 30% to the 50% AMI, with maximum incomes ranging for a family of four between $49,170 to $81,950. With this program, the household pays monthly rent based on the AMI level, and the city pays the difference in the rent. For example, currently, a 50% two-bedroom CCAU, the household will pay $1,547, and the city pays on the lower end $561, and on the higher end, $1,192 monthly to the landlord. The CCAU program increased from two units to 15 units within the past two years. The city currently pays a monthly subsidy of $12,094 from city budget funds that is paid directly to the landlords of those units. These units are currently located at Merrill House, Falls Green, Roseville Towers, Pearson Square, 455 Tinner Hill, Winter Hill, Broad Falls, Lee Square, and Virginia Village.
Okay, thanks, Kayleen. So Virginia Village is kind of a big topic, and you're gonna hear a lot about it tonight. But we're gonna start off with giving you some kind of high-level updates, which touch on some of the items noted in the memo we provided in your council packet tonight. And then we'll have some time later tonight to dive into the future of the project as well, which is also very exciting. Give you guys a little background. A little over a year ago, the project team had to pivot following the departure of the development partner for the program, Wesley Housing. You know, they're leaving, kind of left some questions outstanding that we needed to answer, such as how to manage the properties moving forward. What do we do with the property that Wesley owned? How to address opportunities as they arrive, as well as any future plans with the project? What does the future of the project look like now that we don't have a development partner? So the good news is, we have answers for all of those questions for you tonight. To answer the property management question, we were able to work with the procurement team. They were fantastic in helping guide us through the process of putting together an RFQ to find some qualified professionals to help manage the property management aspect of it. So we were able to work with them. We developed a robust property management contract, and we used that to find a partner. We ended up awarding the contract to Promax Property Management. We've worked with them in the past, but I think we're really excited to work with them now, because they're gonna be taking on a lot more of the responsibilities for the program, and they're also, they have a much stronger contract that helps the city work with them more effectively. For the Wesley-owned parcel, we had with Wesley a memorandum of understanding. That memorandum of understanding helped guide us through the process for reacquiring the property that Wesley procured while they were still development partners. So the good news is, we were able to work with them. They were very cooperative in transferring that property over to the EDA. And I'll just take a moment. We're also gonna talk about the EDA as well, and how that partnership with the city works. They're gonna be owning the property. The city's gonna be helping manage those properties. And Wyatt's gonna talk with you about that a little bit later this evening. And finally, the good news is, we were able to act quickly to mobilize our acquisition strike fund. So for you, for those of you who are not aware, using a variety of sources, including federal grants, city contribution funds, and Amazon grant funds, we put together kind of a strike fund for if there's new properties that come available. We're able to deploy those funds in order to procure those properties. Well, three such properties became available. We were able to act quickly and successfully purchase those properties about a month ago. This include properties of 202, 204, 206 Gibson Street. And together with our new property management contract, we're able to kind of bring those properties onboard and kind of maintain the level of standard and quality for management of those properties as well. So we'll talk a little bit more about this a little bit later, but for now, we'll move on to the next slide. We'll talk a little bit about our federal grants programs. So we have, it's really, it's one program with two different streams of funding, that's CDVG, Community Development Block Grant, and then there's HOME, which is also sort of an acronym, Home Investment Partnership Program. So the idea here is, when we had Wesley onboard, we were gonna give a lot of those funds for multiple fiscal years to Wesley to help maintain those properties. Am I coming in hot? I'm good? Okay. They're gonna maintain those properties using these grant funds. They left. We didn't have a plan, so we had to work with the Housing Commission in order to develop a plan. We took in applications. Typically, for these funds, we use nonprofit partners. So we reached out to our city nonprofit partners. Some of them applied for those funds. We worked with the Housing Commission, and we got some applications, and Housing Commission liked one of those applications. They voted on them. And part of the, one of the items in our council packet, maybe we can, Wyatt, do you think we should talk about it now, or should we talk about it a little bit later? It's a little bit later in the agenda.
It is, but I think you have all the information right here, and so we probably can just get it taken care of here.
Sure, sure. So, long story short, we basically have three fiscal years we're working with, 22, sorry, 23, 24, 25. 22, sorry, 23 is split up with CDVG and HOME, 24 and 25, it's also on the screen here. Those are gonna be combined into one lump sum. We're gonna basically combine all three fiscal years for CDVG, which is a total of $184,000 approximately, give or take. We're gonna use those funds pursuant to the application that the Housing Commission voted on with Falls Church Housing Corporation. You're gonna hear them again a little bit later tonight, because they're also affiliated with National Housing, NHPF, National Housing Partnership Foundation. But we are going to work with them. They're gonna do some field upgrades in the Winter Hill apartment complex. Again, they're a nonprofit partner. They help keep housing in the neighborhood affordable, and we're gonna help manage some of those maintenance costs as well.
Sorry, you have a question, Aaron?
Can I just ask one question while we're on this slide?
Yeah.
When I was reading, sorry, it wasn't clear to me. So the three years, is it essentially like that there's normally a lag in the dispersment of these funds, or did we end up because Wesley was the partner needing to like recoup dispersed funds, and now that we've recouped the funds, we're just reallocating them to a different grant recipient?
That's exactly what's going on. So, you know, we had Wesley onboard, I think, since 22, I believe. And while we were negotiating and trying to figure out how to make the pro forma work, trying to get them to move forward with the program, years went by. And we said, well, you know, we needed more and more money in order to contribute to the program to make sure that it stayed solvent. And then they left, and we said, well, what are we gonna do with these funds? So we found a use for them, essentially. And then, of course, reserving the right to look at future funding sources or funding opportunities as well for fiscal year '26 and beyond as well.
Anything else on the affordable housing update? Are we gonna talk to the ownership program?
Happy to move on to the affordable homeownership program.
That's the next slide.
I think we're good.
Cool. So affordable homeownership program. So this update's pretty quick, but just to give you guys a quick update, we work with National Housing Partnership Foundation. They're a development partner for the program. We have stood up this program back in '23. And the nuts and bolts of it are essentially the partner goes out and finds a property in the city. We find eligible applicants. We put those two together, and we create affordable housing. We have those affordable applicants purchase those properties. It's been a very successful project to date. When we originally conceived of the project, we estimated there to be about 18 affordable homes created through the program. Today, I'm happy to report that, based on current projections, we're actually gonna extend that to 20 units total. Currently, we have nine units that have been paired with purchasers and closed. So that's almost halfway through the program. And then we have three more units that we have purchased that we're looking for active participants in the program as well. So we're very excited about the program. It's moving along very successfully. And I guess I'll take a moment to see if you have any questions on that before moving on.
Are we gonna ask questions for each section? Because I'm sure I had just reserved questions for everything at the end. Let me just finish up.
Let's do it. All right. Let's go to the next one. All right. Give you guys a couple of quick updates on the Affordable Living Policy. So, you know, we, with your help, thank you, adopted the Affordable Living Policy back in August. Very excited about that. In that policy, we included, for the first time, kind of a long-term game plan on how to do a lot of these things. But the good news is, is while we were going through the process, again, we started back in like '23 almost, we completed a lot of these tasks. We got a lot of these things done. So, for example, we updated and modernized our Affordable Housing Fund update process last year. So we've been operating on this new platform. We created an entire dashboard, which actually I want to share with you in one second. I'll just finish this slide real quick. So we created a dashboard where we are able to display a lot of the information in real time, in an interactive setting with the public. So it's a great opportunity to kind of enhance our communication and transparency with the public. And then, of course, in the last year, we were able to modify the state code for affordable dwelling units in a way that gives the city an opportunity to revamp our own city, our own ADU ordinance, and bring it more in line with local jurisdictions in a way that is more effective for how we use affordable housing moving forward. So if we can just take one moment, I want to switch over to the Affordable Living Dashboard to give you guys a quick update. Really proud of this. All right. So this is our Affordable Living Dashboard. It's completely online. You guys can access it today. I think the easiest way to do it is if you go to our Housing Human Services website, there's a big button on the right side. It says Affordable Living Dashboard. This is a platform that was conceived of and delivered as part of the Affordable Living Policy, hence Affordable Living Dashboard. So we have not only housing information, but we have housing plus information. So we have demographic information. We have human services information. We have a variety of topics. This is what I like to say is like a living, breathing version of our yearly affordable housing update, plus some of those other things discussed. So, for example, it is interactive. You can kind of play around with it. If we shoot over to the fourth slide, I really like this one. And I don't know if I should say this, but we borrowed the idea from Arlington, borrowed. They were more than willing to share it.
I think we're all about efficiency.
It was all about efficiency. That's how we operate in Housing Human Services. So if you guys have any questions about how AMIs work, either what the incomes are or what the rents look like for those things, this is your best friend. You go to this page, and again, it's live today. You can select the radio on the side, and it'll change based on the AMI level. And it goes all the way down to 30, which is pretty low, and it goes all the way up to 120. So we're very proud of that. And again, it's a village, takes a village to raise a dashboard. You know, and just to, we'll just kind of run through. We go to the next slide here. You know, we talk about AMI breakdowns for the neighborhoods, next slide. You know, we get into some like more detailed statistics on how homeownership works and the cost of homeownership in the city. And as you can see, especially the chart on the right, that number keeps going up. So it gets more and more expensive every year, especially since the pandemic. Go forward maybe two or three slides. You know, we have, this is our preservation tab, so it lets you know what the future of the city looks like in terms of what it looks like when, if some of these affordability requirements fall off. As well as on the left graph here, it shows your homeownership and how it's gonna be increasing over the next several years, thanks to the homeownership program we discussed. You know, we try to keep this as up-to-date as possible. You know, thanks to help with our fantastic, we have an internship program that also NHPF helps fund, that helps us have a rotating cast of folks who can help us keep that data current. And again, the other really cool thing about this is it's pretty live. It's pretty current. So the idea is, as we get new information, we update the platform, and it comes live. So by the next day, it should be current. And then, of course, a lot of this data comes from various sources, so we try to do a good job of sourcing that data. We have a page at the end, page 11, that lists all of our sources for where we're getting these documents. So just in general, very excited about this. Happy to roll it out. Hope you have questions that I can answer about it, too. This is something we've been wanting to roll out for a while. We can jump back to the other slide deck and finish that out now. And then we're gonna go ahead and close this presentation out with a couple of the future items for housing. So again, we talked about the Affordable Living Policy. We had this kind of like future outlook for something like five or plus years. So right now, we're kind of starting to work through a lot of those items. We're trying to look ahead for the next year. So it includes things like the Community Needs Assessment, which was kind of alluded to in Meredith's update. We want to have a better idea of what are the needs of populations in the city, including the unhoused population. One of the things we did when we updated our Affordable Housing Fund process was we requested some additional funds in order to get that done. We're currently working through that process right now. We've had multiple talks with Fairfax County. We're trying to see if they're willing to help us out and be a good partner, which they are, but we always want help where we can find it. But we have some funds set aside for that, and that's one of the things that we're gonna be working on over the next year. We also mentioned the ADU ordinance update. We got the state legislation changed. Now we gotta get the local legislation changed. It's a project. We're gonna be working with our planning team to get that done, and we're very excited about it. And in similar vein, we have Virginia Village process that we'll talk about a little bit later tonight as well. So at that point, I think that's the end of this slide deck. Happy to take any questions or comments or accolades.
Thank you. Thank you for the, thank you for the very comprehensive update. I guess just a quick comment. I guess just a quick comment before I open it up. I was at NVRC, there was a regional housing discussion last Friday, and it was very apparent that like, while we were small, we were pretty sophisticated in terms of the housing strategies that we do, because jurisdictions across all of Nova was represented. So it was really apparent that like what we're doing, we're really trying to punch above our weight. So thank you to the housing staff and the Housing Commission for leading us away. Who's got questions or comments? Looks like Laura does. Start with you, Laura.
Hi. Thank you so much for this presentation. And yes, kudos to all that great online information.
That's going to be really helpful to me as a city council member in the years to come, so thank you. Two quick questions. One is the affordable dwelling units. There was a mention that about almost eighteen percent of those are occupied by either school employees or city employees. I was just wondering, how does the logistics of that, how does that work? Do we always reserve a particular units for city council and, I mean, not city council, city employees and school employees? Could that eighteen percent bump up? Or are we always trying to keep it at eighteen percent? I was just wondering more the logistics of that piece.
City employees, those who work in the city, we do receive priority for those units. So once the units do come available, we work through the waitlist to find the eligible households. And those who are working for the city, they have a higher ranking in their priority list. So we would reach out to them first, and if they are interested and want to move forward, then we get them determined eligible for the unit.
Okay, and then do you know, do we, like as part of orientation for new teachers and new city employees, do we communicate that they could put their names on a waitlist for those units?
We do outreach in the schools, and I always send out information to the schools and city staff, once we have new units coming available.
Great. Thank you. That's terrific. And then, you know, I really enjoyed, you know, reading more about the affordable, the homeownership program and that there's three houses available right now or units available. How do we promote that to the community?
In the next couple of weeks, and we're going to have a more robust conversation about how to present that information to the community. We've done a couple of things in the past, like we put out mailers with the car tax notes. We have a website up that advertised that information. We have these flyers, little postcard flyers we're really excited about. We put them together, I think, about a year ago. But hopefully, we're going to be able to share more details about what our kind of more broader communication strategy is. But I'll say that, you know, we started this in twenty-three. Right now, we're targeting about five units per year, and that seems like probably a good pace. Also, in the last probably six months, things have slowed down a little bit, at least from a housing market perspective. So it's been harder, I think, in general, to get people to commit to purchasing.
Probably also harder with higher interest rates. Your money doesn't go as far.
It's a more challenging market. I think this has the same challenges as any homeownership or any housing market out there, as well as the fact that it's something that we want to make sure that people are aware of, that people might not have access to. So, you know, it's probably a combination of those two things that we're going to try to do in order to make sure that people both are aware of it and have access to it. Because I mean, you know, if rates are high, then this is a good program for you, right? If they're too high for you. If houses are too expensive, this is probably a good program for you. So we'd like to make sure people have access to it and know about it.
And these are condominiums, is that correct?
So most of them have been condominiums. We're excited to say that of the three that we have available, one of them is actually single-family dwellings, the first of the program. So we're really excited about that one as well, and trying to find the right household to match with that unit as well.
Are we from Winterfell Townhouses?
We have a couple of Winterfell townhouses, but we have one that's a single. Not in Winterfell.
Okay. So what I was just going to say is, you know, I didn't, until I became a council member, I didn't know that the city had this program. So, yeah, I think if there's a way we can, you know, whether it's for, you know, a young couple, a young single person, you know, or an empty nest or whatever it is, but I think it's a great opportunity for, you know, for our residents. So I hope we can figure out a good way to get that information out there. Because I think you will, if we can do, I'm not being critical, but if we could get the word out, I think, I would think you would start having a waitlist for this program as well. But thank you for the presentation. It's great work.
Other questions, comments?
I guess just following up on that, it wasn't clear to me, or maybe even just looking at one of the listings like online. So the units, you know, when I lived in DC, for example, like you would often see on Redfin, the units with affordable covenants, right, available sort of for purchase, but it just had in the description section, like this is a unit that is administered through X, you know, program, whereas I think possibly our units like don't show up as for-sale units, because maybe we have already purchased them or they're purchased through, you know, the homeownership program. And so I just was wondering in terms of like a way to structure their visibility, if there's an ability to do something like that, so that they actually show up as like purchasable for-sale units that are administered through a program that the person would have to qualify for and like seek further information, so that it's not all on us to advertise as opposed to like, oh, I'm looking for condos in Falls Church, and like this is one of the results that you get. And then when you click on it, you actually see that, you know, you need to go through a few more steps, but it at least puts the, it puts the information in front of the person in a much more readily available way.
Said differently, like could NHP use MLS essentially?
Yeah.
To list it?
Yeah, yeah.
So it gets more visibility, because obviously people are browsing MLS.
Excellent question. Excellent insight. This was a topic of hot debate when we first started the program. So what we learned through this process, and really, this is one of the reasons why we're able to kind of stretch it from eighteen to twenty, is unless you're willing to work with a real estate agent, you can't just list things on MLS. So if we're going to work with a real estate agent, it's going to cost, the cost of the project is going to increase, and then that's going to ultimately mean less units in the long term. We are very hesitant to do that, because we want to make sure this program works, and it's been working, right? We're nine, we're almost halfway through the program at this point. So, you know, if we get to a situation where we're not moving anything and it's just not happening and people just are not aware of it, maybe we'll get to that point in the future. But I think in terms of like how we've been operating the program, I think we're making really tough decisions, good decisions, and trying to keep a really lean budget so that we can make sure that as many people get access to this program as possible.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Mary Beth?
I just want to say thank you for both of these reports together. Work really well. I was very skeptical of the homeownership program when you first described it to us several years ago. I remember thinking, there is no way this is going to actually result in eighteen homes. But now it will be twenty, so well done. I think it's really impressive, the complexity of how you've made that work and additionally the ADUs and getting that many people into homes. That's a lot of work to screen and place, and that's wonderful to have all those people in our community. So that is great. I'm really glad to hear that a lot of them are general government and school employees. I know a lot of them, and they're thrilled to be a part of the program. Those who are willing to talk about it are really happy to be part of that program. So thank you for that as well. On Virginia Village and others, I'm very excited to see how we, as a city council, as city staff and community, really work to make Virginia Village be the next bold thing that we do. So thank you for all of this.
Final questions, thoughts? I normally have lots of questions, but I've had the pleasure of being your liaison, so I pepper you with all of my questions in your monthly meetings already. I love the dashboard, by the way. Lots of data for us to explore. Thank you for that. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
So the next item is Virginia Village, and Mary Beth Connolly's comments were a great intro to that topic. So what's in your packet is a memo that provides a draft kind of roadmap for us to discuss tonight. What we'd like to do is, I'll make a few introductory comments. So currently, when we talk about the city doing something, Virginia Village, the EDA is the owner of the quadplexes. And so when we talk about managing the property, which staff is involved in, we're doing those actions at the behest of and on behalf of the EDA, which is the owner of those properties. And so in the short term, what staff's commitment is that any units that are under the EDA's ownership and are being managed by ProMax, the city, our kind of our top priority is to make sure that those units are safe, that they are good housing for our tenants. This is an important community, and we're like in front of mind, committed to making sure that in the interim period before they're ultimately conveyed to another partner, that we're doing a good job in managing these properties. So that's job number one. Job number two is thinking in the near term of a process by which we will ultimately convey these properties into the hands of a selected partner who will carry out the purposes that the city has designated. At its essence, what this is, is a commercial real estate transaction to accomplish public purposes. So our job, or the city council's job, ultimately, with a lot of community input, is determine what are those public purposes that we want to accomplish on this land. And there's two vehicles for the council to articulate what our public purposes are. One, through the land use regulations. And Jack Trainor is going to walk us through in just a moment, what do our land use regulations say currently about the Virginia Village property? And it's a lot of crossed and mixed signals, and so we need to clarify that, and we need to update that. In the past five years, the city council has been very clear that the desired direction is to preserve Virginia Village as affordable and ultimately to redevelop it with committed affordable housing. We need to get our land use regulations up to speed with that vision, which we can flesh out and articulate in more detail through the land use process. And the other vehicle is in the drafting, I believe, of a request for proposals that we would put out to the market. And in that, we would articulate, here's what we're trying to accomplish, and then the market will respond to that. And it could be a nonprofit respondents, which we think would be what will happen, or it could be a mix. It could be a for-profit and a nonprofit joined together to do this together and possibly with a commercial component. These are all things that through this process, the council can ultimately articulate what we want to see happen here. And so what we'd like to set the stage for tonight is sort of thinking through those steps that the community will undertake. Tonight, this will be the council's first discussion since the Wesley MOU, to refresh what that process looks like. What we would like to do after this discussion, and we've gotten council direction, is pretty quickly get before the community to describe this process. And step one would be to get with the tenants to describe this process. That's a really important stakeholders. These are the homes of people who live in this city that we're talking about the future of. And so it's, our first stop will be with the tenants to speak with them about what this process looks like and what they can expect in terms of how long it will take and what our relocation policies are and things like that. That'll be a crucial first stop. So with that, unless I've left anything else, we'll turn it out, we'll turn it over first to Jack, who will walk us through what our land use policies say about this property right now. And then we'll turn it over to Matt, who's going to walk us through what's in your read ahead, sort of steps in a process where we can update that policy and then ultimately go out to market for the property. Jack?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Shields, and good evening, council. Jack Trainor, Senior Planner. I'm going to be walking through a summary of the guidance that we have in several planning documents on Virginia Village. We got about seven slides, so it'll be a quick presentation. Then I'll turn it over to Matt Matusek, our Planning Director, and then we're happy to answer any questions after that. So if we go to the next slide, Matt? These are the documents I'm going to be walking through tonight, including the comprehensive plan, a couple of small area plans, the future land use map, what the current zoning designations are on the site, and then some affordable housing-related documents and charges. We've included the dates, you'll notice, for each of these documents, you'll notice that several of these are more than twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old now, with the most recent guidance coming from the Affordable Living Policy, which was updated earlier this year, and the strike fund that Brendan mentioned earlier. So I'll start with what the comprehensive plan says about Virginia Village. So the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan from 2005 makes, you know, some specific recommendations for the Virginia Village site, and we've included that most relevant paragraph on the slide, which I'll read quickly. So the comp plan recommends that a variety of housing sizes and styles should be developed in an integrated mixed use, being residential and commercial fashion in the area of the Virginia Village property. And so the comp plan quickly helps inform, you know, the land uses that come out of the smaller, small area plans, which I'll talk about next. And the small area plans, if we go to the next slide, focus on the planning opportunity areas in the city. So a quick refresher, a planning opportunity area is an area in the city that the city is designated to encourage development or redevelopment. We've got six small area plans currently and eight total planning opportunity areas. These areas span basically our major commercial corridors in the city, Broad Street and Washington Corridor, and then over on the East End, which was our most recently adopted small area plan. So the Virginia Village site is highlighted here in a kind of red outline, and you'll see that there's actually two different planning opportunity areas and two different small area plans that make recommendations for land use and zoning within the Virginia Village site. Majority of the Virginia Village sites covered in the South Washington Street Small Area Plan and POA. That's that number two there, in that kind of orange hue. But then the four properties east of Gibson Street are within the downtown POA, that number three there, just that little sliver there. And so both of these small area plans actually have somewhat different recommendations for land use within Virginia Village. And so in addition to, you know, the original charge from the comp plan, when thinking about redeveloping Virginia Village, the specific recommendations in these small area plans may need to be revisited also. This is the future land use map. This is part of the comprehensive plan and informs what, again, what the future land use should be on a per parcel basis. And Virginia Village is the center of the screen there, highlighted in that kind of Simpsons yellow. It's mixed use, like that description, mixed use, kind of the checkerboard. So the entire site on the future land use map is noted and recommended to be a mixed use consistent with the land use chapter in the comp plan. So moving to what the current zoning is on the site, similar to the small area plan, there's two different zoning districts that inform the Virginia Village site. Those Gibson Street properties are all Zone B2, central business, while the rest of the Virginia Village area, Zone RM, multifamily residential. And so these obviously have different uses about what you can do by right. And I think, so the B2 zoning doesn't have, for instance, any residential uses by right. There's a special exception process. And then the MUR or Mixed And then the MUR or mixed use redevelopment overlay also blankets the entire site, which introduces a mixed use redevelopment by right option, regardless of the underlying zoning. But the hurdle for basically all three of these redevelopment options is the, well, there's a couple of things, but probably the biggest thing is the minimum site area, which requires anywhere from one acre to two and a half acres for development projects. And so when thinking about, you know, approaching a redevelopment of Virginia Village, it would have, under the current zoning tools that we have for this site, it would most likely have to be a larger site. And so lastly, several newer housing related documents have sort of updated and I think led the charge for Virginia Village recommendations, specifically the Affordable Living Policy, again, which was updated earlier this year, includes short term and long term recommendations for housing affordability, both in the city, and makes specific Virginia Village recommendations as well. And then we'll also note that the Affordable Housing Acquisition Strike Fund was established specifically for the rehab and acquisition of Virginia Village properties. And so, you know, looking at all of the guidance and again, the charge, I think that's been led most recently for Virginia Village has been from some of these newer housing documents that has, you know, envisioned the acquisition of properties in Virginia Village for their preservation as affordable units. So I'll turn it back to Matt.
Thanks, Jack. Could we bring up the memorandum? Scroll down, I think it's page four. So what I wanted to focus on tonight, good evening, everyone, is building upon the planning background presentation and how does that impact what we want to do next? Some of that has to do with the level of certainty that anybody that we might be partnering with would need to have if they're going to be coming in to, you know, develop that site, particularly in a phased development approach. To date, either past planning practices have focused on wholesale redevelopment and in some cases likely did not anticipate redevelopment at all. So what we partly have to do is reconcile those past visions with the one that's been really kind of growing and developing over the last few years with the strategic acquisitions and really the updated goals of achieving affordability on this property. So if you look at, and I think we have the other memo that we want to pull up, this is the one that was up earlier with the color coded timeline for next two years. There we go. So what we wanted to do is highlight a number of things and emphasize how they can actually occur simultaneously as opposed to being staggered in a linear approach and kind of walk you through the various stages of that schedule just to kind of demonstrate that it is in fact feasible. Part of the two elements that really come to mind are the dates that I'm going to pause and reflect on, which are August of next year and March of 2027. March 2027 represents kind of the closing end of a 16-month process that the city would actually have a little bit more control over in terms of guiding the site moving forward, given where we are and all the work that's gone into this property with the recent acquisitions. Beyond that, some other forces obviously take over outside of the city's control. But March 2027 is the low income housing tax credit deadline that most nonprofit developers would need to have to really make most projects feasible. So once that deadline is missed, and it typically occurs earlier in the month, you literally have to wait one more year for the next March deadline. And that's something we're really being mindful of, that we don't miss as a critical opportunity. Any kind of delays, and you all know this more than I do, clearly spell impacts to site improvements, the state of the current buildings, and how we really want to spend current resources moving forward. So the quicker we can get to redevelopment, I think the quicker it really allows us to achieve these goals in a more, I think, responsible manner. So working backwards from that March 2027 deadline, we also have to allocate enough time for any selected developer to have time to pursue additional funding mechanisms beyond those tax credits and recognizing that we as a city may not be able to put more money into this process beyond the acquisitions in the land that have taken place, with some minor steps throughout the way that I'm going to point out. So allowing any development partner to find those resources, to finalize their plans, building, architecture, and civil engineering, such that they can actually get a site plan approved, that's going to take several months, that we have to work backwards from March 2027. So that brings us to August of 2026 that I'm going to pause on as I go in a regular chronological order, because the RFP process that we're going to describe has to be completed by that point. So, working backwards, not working forwards. To get us there, one of the things we really want to emphasize this winter is twofold. One, doing some due diligence, research, analysis, survey work, things that are actually aren't in control, that we can actually fund. But at the same time, having some informal conversations with the development community to see if what we're anticipating, what we're seeing on a paper actually does make sense. And getting some of those reactions such that we believe by mid to late January, when the council has its retreat, we can probably provide a more robust feedback and report out what we've heard from some of those potential partners and the analysis that we could conduct over the next two to three months. So if that timeline is met and some of the feedback is positive, including tonight, that would put us in a place where we could begin to really engage the community, start scheduling a more robust public process that looks at how do we reconcile that planning history and kind of clarify and catch up those past documents, the small area plans, the zoning ordinance to what's been happening in the last two or three years with the strategic acquisitions? And those things really have to be married up with community's feedback in terms of what is a thoughtful development approach for this property? How do we meet those objectives in light of and in the context of the surrounding neighborhood? Development across the street, developing to the south, potential development to the north, with status quo to the west? And recognizing other transportation impacts, utilities that will be impacted, park expansion, a lot of different elements that I think are at play. So that's something we believe the first half of next year could really be productive with the right approach and the right stakeholders at the table. So as that happens, you can see here some of that background work in the winter, scoping out what that zoning ordinance amendment would look like and updating some of our plans and conducting some of that survey work. That would set us up for spring of '26, at which point we would obviously begin some more robust engagement with the community but be in a better position to design and release the request for proposals. There would be a selection committee that would have to be stood up and obviously some informational meetings throughout the process to make sure we answer questions, start to get some of the initial interest from the development community. And also use that process to inform the amendments that we just finished talking about that update our planning guidance. So there's actually a very strategic synergy there where as developers are beginning to respond to that request for proposals, we actually have an opportunity to synthesize that and bring that into the planning process. There's no reason why the two cannot communicate with one another. And then as that concludes, in the summer of '26, we would want to be in a position to select and rank the RFP respondents, select the top ranked team, and begin working forward with a initial development term sheets as we look to the fall, at which point some of that planning work is coming together. We've kind of wrapped up a lot of the robust analysis and are kind of shifting towards the first and second reading in the fall. And during that time, the developer is starting to kind of finalize their plans, figure out what other source, funding sources they can develop and establish relationships with, all in the spirit of making a more competitive proposal for the tax credits that happened in March. So this is how we get to the next 12 months. And again, starting next winter, '26, '27, we would kind of have an entitlement process where staff, boards, and commissions have a chance to review the proposal, verify how it meets all the planning work that just concluded. So hopefully everybody's memory is fairly fresh. And we would have a chance to meet the March 2027 deadline, at which point things are a little bit less out of our control. At that point, we're kind of, kind of in a waiting, wait and hold period, usually not until spring, early summer, do those tax credits get awarded? So we wouldn't know if that funding would become available. The schedule that we've shared in the memo takes the assumption that the funding actually would be awarded, that this would be a competitive bid. And I think the selected developer would probably find partners that are looking at an affordable housing project in Falls Church. And with that, we could forecast that construction could begin as early as fall of 2027, typically lasting anywhere from two and a half to three years before certificates of occupancy could be issued. So again, this is kind of one way of demonstrating how an aggressive but thoughtful process could take us from where we are now and how far we have come to a phased development approach, which still allows us to engage with the remaining property owners and be aggressive in terms of acquisitions. There's nothing here that stops us from doing that, but send a clear signal that we feel like we have enough that at least the first phase could proceed forward. So I wanted to highlight that and happy to answer any questions in terms of the schedule.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for sharing both kind of a aspirational but pretty pragmatic. So I love how you work backwards from kind of the Lytech awarding date annually, because I think that makes a lot of sense. Questions or comments for Jack or Matt? Laura has her hand raised. I'm going to start with you, Laura.
Thank you so much to both of you. Your presentations were very interesting. Just two quick things. So Matt, could you go over again? So, and I'm sorry, I know it's somewhere in the documents, but is it nine properties that we own right now? Or EDA, between us and EDA? Okay. And then that leaves how many left? Seven? And then of the, oh, 11, sorry. And of those 11, are they, how many? I know sometimes that multiples, an entity might own multiple. So of those 11, are we dealing with how many different companies or individuals? Do we have an idea of that? Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, right there.
Okay. Great, thank you. Yeah, so that, obviously that takes a little bit more due diligence and if they're more single owners, it's going to be a little bit more work on all of our parts. But I appreciate the feedback and also the, you know, push to get this information onto the community because while I was campaigning, a couple of people who are more sort of follows local politics know about our plans of this, but, you know, sort of accused us of not being so transparent. So I think this is great that we're having this presentation tonight and that we're going to really have a concerted effort to get that information out. I mean, the only other thing I wanted to throw out there is one of our community members works for SAHF, which is stewards of affordable housing for the future. And they, they're actually located in downtown DC. And they have like 13 different members who are nonprofit affordable housing developers. So that might be a good, you know, when we start to get to that point, to have, talk with the leaders of that nonprofit to really push, push this project out to all of their nonprofit members. Thanks.
Art?
Thank you. I think this was a really good presentation. I'm learning a lot from all the presentations tonight. One quick comment, this is a lot of work for staff. And maybe this is a question for Wyatt. And then we've, we've also mentioned Gordon Triangle. Is staff got enough resources? Or is this kind of over, between this and Gordon Triangle and all the regular stuff, are you guys going to get overwhelmed? Because it's a lot.
And we have to preserve all those units too. Yeah.
It is a lot. And the, I think the Gordon Road Triangle is another kind of big effort that we're thinking, kind of in the initial days, we could, you know, as we're sort of convening people to think about the future of the Gordon Road, it might be less intensive on staff. But if things start to accelerate at Gordon Road, then that's, becomes very intensive for staff and for the whole community. But as, you know, we have a, there have been a lot of people that we've been talking with in City Hall, Andy, Jenny, Dana, and the whole housing team, and bringing Matt and the planners in. This is, you know, these are the types of things that people do get excited about. I mean, this is a really interesting public policy challenge for the city. So I'm not really answering your questions. It is a lot, but we're also pretty excited about it.
And the other thing, a comment I wanted to make is the fact that we own essentially a block of five units here right at the, this recent acquisition, I think is going to really be helpful for, as we get into the RFP, as we get into the construction, say, okay, how do we make this and phase it? There's a block that can go, that can move much faster than maybe the rest of Virginia Village while we're negotiating for purchase. So I'm glad to see this kind of parallel work going on. I really appreciate that because I think that having that block is really going to help us later on. So it's great that we have that.
That's right. And Brendan and Cindy have sort of been our, sort of, our principal contacts for owners in the neighborhood to when properties have gone on to the market. And I really appreciate what they've done to make all this assemblage happen, along with the EDAs being a great partner.
Jim, I guess, is EDA welcome, owners of the properties?
Yeah. Oh, this is exciting because we've been working on this since, what, 2018, I think? Cindy came to us and said, hey, there's a property that's having any interest.
It's 2021, that's when we did the MOU with Wesley.
But I think we were talking about it even earlier. It was exciting. Matt, my question is, some of us earlier on were talking about, could we have a blueprint, something that people could see? You know, picture's worth a thousand words. If we don't get to a proposal stage where some pretty specific descriptions are made, is there something we can use with our public presentations that will give people an image of what this might look like? If we just talk in the abstract, I'm not sure we're going to convince people this is what they should feel good about. So we need something that we can use during that period, I think.
Absolutely. The intent is to rely on plenty of resources we have in-house, 3D modeling, renderings to depict, I think, thoughtful approaches to how this property could redevelop, but also being mindful of stopping short of acknowledging or prescribing answers that we really don't have. And I think the benefit of the RFP process is to bring that creativity from the market here by providing them some of those parameters that we're going to hear from the community, providing them with the limited but, you know, meaningful parcel consolidation that's in front of us, and letting those folks and their expertise who do this on an annual basis and very difficult challenging sites to see what's actually possible purely from a housing form, from a phasing perspective, transportation, fire access, loading. And I think that's really where the creativity is going to come. But I think to inform that and to make sure everybody can follow the conversations, we can certainly have plenty of information, visual information, that I think will allow everybody to keep up. So.
Mary Beth?
Thank you for this. We have talked about this a lot. And I really appreciate that you pulled that all together with a timeline and you have so much of the, so many of the things that we've talked about over time, that you're thinking about the existing residents as well as the neighbors when you talk about the West is not going to change. I think that's really important that we need to be concerned about the neighbors to the West. How big is this whole site? There was on slide six, there were, but what are the other? Can you go back to slide six? There were some other numbers there.
You mean in the planning presentation?
Yeah, in Jack's presentation, that added up to nine acres. And I'm just wondering what the other acres were.
Let me see if I can show that again.
I don't know. In my head, I was adding up to nine and it seemed big.
It's four acres.
No, yeah, yeah.
There we go.
That's not it.
Slide 11.
I have, we have it as a chart that lays out the exact acreage.
Yes.
And I know there's, there's the acreage of the parcels and then there's the roadway as well, which gets added in. So it's, I think it's five in round numbers.
So the roadway is another piece, okay.
If you add the roads, it's one acre or so.
Additional acre roads, yeah.
This is 4.2 here.
That might be the presentation.
Yeah, I thought that was.
It says the entirety of Virginia Village is within the.
So the entire site is 4.2 acres.
Yeah, so the RM was 3.5, the B2 was .7.
Okay. And what was beneath that on the chart? Was that just the addition of the two?
I'm sorry?
4.2 and 7. I want to see the chart again.
Let me see if I can bring it up.
The whole thing is 4.2.
It may have been the rest of the, the MUR, like that M U R district, and so it may have been that everything, including tax analysts, and South was getting to the nine where the MUR was, although part of the MUR was already developed.
All right, thank you. That makes sense.
There we go.
Did you have others?
I did. There we go. What comes right after that?
Fire?
Yes. I see .7, 3.5, and 4.2, but it's .7 plus 3.5 gives us 4.2.
4.2.
Okay, thank you. All right, the mix of uses is really important, the mix of incomes is really important, and I'm glad you mentioned that. And Virginia Housing, Cindy, I know you work a lot with Virginia Housing. Is there a role in this for Virginia Housing to provide grants for us as we go forward?
There certainly is, besides the Lytech compulsion and opportunity is happening with VML conversations, with the housing conference, and so that dialogue has been reengaged with Virginia Housing, both for upfront grants and ultimate funding.
And then our pre-process really reminds me of what we did with the high school property, where we put it out to RFP and learned from what we got, and it got better and better and better as we went along. So that's a great process, so thanks. I'm glad to see it that way.
Dave?
So let me ask a couple questions. How many people currently live in the properties that the city owns, first in total and then the block?
So with the new... So with the 202, 204, 206, 208, we have four units in each of those buildings that are occupied. In 303, we currently have two units that are occupied. 302, all four are occupied. 310 Shirley, we currently have three, and 312, we currently have three also. And in 310, that is the, 310 South Maple, that is the vacant building.
So to understand this in two ways, if fully occupied, how many people live in the current units, could live in the current units, number one? Number two, and how many total? And I'm assuming that, that this is relatively affordable rent in these units, so I have that right? Okay, so we're talking about relatively affordable units today. So what I'm trying to figure out is how many total units that we're going to need to replace plus, and how many people live in those units that we're going to need to provide housing plus? Otherwise, we're not really adding to affordable housing, and we're spending a lot of time and money doing it. And I would note that the environment there is relatively pleasant, a lot of trees, a lot of grass. It fits in very well with the surrounding neighborhood. So my first question goes, what is the target with redevelopment? First of all, what do we have there today in terms of affordable housing, number of units and people housed at maximum? And then secondly, what does that say about the target for any redevelopment, number one? Number two, I have a lot of questions about throwing aside the small area plans and concern with making sure that we're including full participation of the surrounding residential areas, because this is different from the high school. In the high school, basically, we had one neighbor, and that was Fairfax County, and we had issues from time to time, but we worked through them happily for everyone. So this is, it's already been likened to the West End project, and there are already some complexities that you don't have. So let me go back to the first question. What is the maximum number of people living in units, the maximum number of people that could be living safely in the units that we own? And how many total affordable units do we own?
So there are eight units that are occupiable in this development, 310 South...
How many? I'm sorry?
Sorry. There are eight units that are occupiable in this development. 310 South Maple is not occupied. So of the eight, there's four units in each, so that'll be 32 units.
So we're talking 32?
32 units, right. And there could be one to two people in each unit, based on standards.
Fifty-one people. I'm sorry, how many?
There could be one to two units, one to two people per unit. So...
Right, right, I got it. So I'm just trying to get the numbers straight. So what is the number, then, that you were saying?
The, the number of people per unit is one to two. So it could be as much as 64 people total.
So let's assume two. So two times 32 is 64. So whatever development we do, we ought to be significantly going past 32 units and 64 possible people living in those units. So with that in mind, what is developable in the block that we own? By the block, I mean, you know, pretty much the top, what is it, 204 to 206, maybe including 303, and maybe including 302, if you do some creative work there.
So if I can just pause for a second?
What's the square footage of that, of that block?
If I can just pause for a second, part of that debate that I think you're opening up gets us to the very reason why we need an RFP. I think we've spent a lot of time...
Very reason why, why, I'm sorry?
That we need to have an RFP and have the development community come in to highlight what's actually feasible, given the parcels that we have acquired. I think we've spent a lot of time internally to look at where the four properties are, the recent acquisitions. We even had some college students help us kind of brainstorm what the potential build might, might be. All those answers, in most part, have been predicated on the fact that this entire site would redevelop, which is not very likely, and they were also accounting for a number of units that are not very competitive in terms of the tax credits we want to pursue. So from that perspective, I think we have not internally, and with some assistance to date, reached any buildable or realistic scenarios. And I think for that reason, we need to have an RFP that provides that creativity and signals to us what combination of those parcels maybe makes the most sense.
I appreciate that, but to be, to put out an RFP, you need certain basic objectives, goals, targets, if you will, in order to judge RFP responders. So that's an art, it's not a science. But I'm just probing, what do we have to do to significantly add? Or can we significantly add to the number of units we already have? And if we realistically can't, then we ought to be pursuing a different strategy.
I think our approach is to really develop the building envelope, if you will, kind of what is the box in which you can develop, and let the market dictate how many units they can fit in that. The way in which we would do that most likely would start with the surrounding context of the west, where we would obviously want to prioritize a green buffer, transitions that are meaningful and thoughtful to that lower density development, think about the various housing typologies, and concentrate most of the height to the north or along Maple, where other developments have similarly been, I think, targeting that. Beyond that, however, and the street network perhaps, that would still be necessary there with a potential park connection, I'm not sure how much more prescriptive we can get in our public engagement process, because we would need a proposal for that.
I guess, I just fundamentally believe that we're going to be expending a lot of time, and somebody's going to be have to, expending a lot of money, perhaps a partner, perhaps taxpayers, in going through a process that we're not sure will actually add more affordable units. And if that's true, then that's a serious issue.
I think that's why in the January timeframe, staff is proposing to have some informal conversations with the development community to make sure we're on the right path, that this is developable, that this will elicit more than the 80 units of affordable housing we currently have.
Exactly.
So hopefully by our retreat in January, we'll get some feedback, informal feedback from the development community before we embark on this path, because we want to make sure we're heading in the right direction. Wyatt, you look like you were going to say something?
Yeah, I think that's right. And what, what Matt has laid out is a process by which the, you know, we can go sort of step by step to make the types of well-informed determinations that I think Councilmember Snyder is speaking of. And so we don't have the answers to those tonight, but there's a process by which we could. And Matt, I think articulated some principles that suggest themselves and which we've already discussed, you know, about sort of the, sort of having that buffer to the west, density more to the north and towards the Maple frontage. Those are all things that make sense, but we can flesh those ideas out with more, you know, through, through a good process.
I think it'd be helpful to actually, because we've talked around those principles probably for a good three years now. We've talked about nonprofit, maybe a combination with for-profit, maybe, you know, townhomes adjacent to Winter Hill that would, you know, solve middle housing, create that kind of buffer and transition to lower density. We've talked about mixed income plus affordable. So there's a bunch of principles we've talked about. It might be helpful just to actually list them, so that we're all on the same page, so that as we go forward the process, we're not suddenly talking about something that hasn't been discussed before.
Agreed. And, and I do, I do think it is fundamental going forward that at some point, a no-go, no-go needs to be based upon whether we're actually adding to the number of affordable units and people that can live in affordable units.
I think we've been pretty clear that by spending, you know, time to buy nine quads, we want to make sure that we see an eventual increase in affordable, so more than the 80 that's there. Aaron?
So I'm going to zoom out a little bit. You may have to be slightly patient with me, because I might not have the most linear, I'm getting somewhere, but it might not be the most linear questions here. I think overall, I, you know, I'm committed to doing something here. I want to make sure that we preserve affordable housing. Like Dave, I want to make sure that we're not displacing people unnecessarily, that we kind of take a thoughtful approach to planning, both for the people who live there and for the, you know, area that abuts the property, and that we are taking into account, you know, at least somewhat, the small area planning that before took place, right? So I think when Dave pressed you somewhat on like, what is an RFP informed by, right? We're saying we need to do new small area planning, but you already like verbalized some of the things that I think were important to hear that came out of like the last small area plans, which was that we recognized when we did the, you know, the South Washington District, and I went and reread the small area plans. I mean, I had read them when the Quinn development was happening, and then I reread them again in preparation for tonight, and I acknowledged like the tension in the Central District versus the South Washington District, and some of, we've been talking about affordable housing, the plans themselves talk about retaining affordable housing, or, you know, expanding upon the units that are there, yet like the top block is shown as park space, because it anticipated that the bowling alley would be redeveloped, right? Like the, the middle space is sort of considered potentially park space or community center space, and there isn't a visual representation of the actual affordable housing that the plans like call for incorporating into the plan, because it's very like, you know, SimCity blocks just like put down in a rudimentary kind of way, right? But I guess my concern is that on this accelerated like dual-path approach, which I recognize we're doing for well-intentioned reasons, to try to get developers thinking about this, to try to, you know, capitalize on timeframes for low-income housing tax credits, at the same time, like, it feels slightly disingenuous to say we're taking on a small area planning process to get community input, at the same time that we're like already put out an RFP to a development community that isn't just simply like, let's workshop ideas, but based on the idea of selecting a provider who's done their own work similarly to like Wesley Housing, in figuring out like, what does this ultimately need to look like for me to want to invest here, want to become partners, or to make this profitable, or to make this like nonprofit project that we can actually deliver on? And part of, I think, what surprised the community in the Wesley Housing, you know, discussion, right, then you weren't here at this point, is that in the memorandum, it kept sort of saying, well, we'll have the community conversation about what the development looks like, and then Wesley Housing queried how much the city was involved, like seemingly on its own, was, you know, developing plans that potentially looked very different from what the community anticipated or envisioned that site would look like. And so what I don't want to happen is that we're in an RFP process, and we're like hit go, foot on the accelerator, and that we're doing small area planning simultaneously, but it isn't really like genuine community input. What it is, is bringing the small area plan into alignment, so that when the provider comes in later and has to seek to have a zoning text amendment, that it's prepackaged for them to kind of get what they want, within an overall sort of like, this is what we're trying to accomplish, but without like truly being informed by a community conversation about like what was warranted there and what makes sense there for that small area generally, as opposed to something that much more like resembles spot zoning of sorts. That, that's my overall concern with the approach. And so I guess, I guess I have a few questions, like, A, what do you, I'll put them out there, and we can take them in like order, right? A, like, what do you view the, the point, so to speak, of the small area planning process, which would normally be much more organic than like having the dual RFP process happening simultaneous to it, to be, if it's not potentially like shoehorning the small area plan to potentially meet like what, how the RFP sort of comes out, if that makes sense? And then, and then, two, sort of how much of the earlier small area plan do you anticipate like incorporating into the RFP, when you were talking about like, you know, the buffer space and the park expansion? Are those going to be pieces of things that we talk about kind of in the RFP to remain the, so like to keep the elements that seemingly were important and part of the community conversation? And three, to the like extent we're taking up small area planning, are we really doing like holistic small area plans that are gonna, you know, incorporate the fact that we now have like the 10-story anchor, right, in South Washington? And we sort of know how this area is starting to come together in a way that we didn't previously know, because we didn't have, you know, 455 Tanner Hill, like Pearson was the only thing in the small area plan. And so I guess I, I would just like, I, I know the staff report sort of says these things, and I get why we're doing them and you're approaching it this way, but I would like for you to just like disentangle your thinking about where the community input actually like gets integrated in this in like a meaningful way, and then also to understand, like, since people are living there and we're not worried about 310 South Maple, like, you know, falling apart in a, units that aren't really habitable, what, what is potentially the drawback? I get, you know, sort of what it is, but like it may be not as like we need to hit 2027, as opposed to we need to hit like 2028, if it turns out like you could get low-income housing tax credits in 2028, but we're just in 12 months later of a cycle. Sorry, so, there you go.
That was one question?
No, I said I wanted to front-load it, right? Just so that we get, overall, I think it was, like, so we can, I guess the dual track. I understand the dual track for timing. I don't understand the dual track as far as meaningful like community input. So let's take that as question one.
So this will be different than anything else we've done. So that, let's just kind of put that out there, right? Elephant in the room. And it's going to be a surgical strike that doesn't resemble any other small area plan that has taken a year to complete. All right, we're focusing on one site, and it is unique, because we have been investing in strategically acquiring properties that we have not done anywhere else. So it automatically becomes different and not really comparable to other properties. Beyond that, I think there was a healthy reference to guiding principles and other elements that I think people can resonate with, that they would associate with proper and meaningful development, that don't have to be as prescriptive as some of the zoning language that's currently in place, that in not-so-many words eliminates any opportunities for phased development here. Minimum site areas, very specific setbacks, lot coverage. Some of those things work on some properties in a phased development opportunity, that they're basically the first thing that stops it from going forward. So how do we revisit some of the guiding principles and, and find a way to generalize some of what the expectations are? What are people willing to live with? And it could be something as simple as, how do we know that we absolutely have to have a 45-foot height restriction on one side of the property? Can we translate that, translate that into stories, perhaps? Could that automatically make, make a big difference in terms of what the development community sees? community sees as viable? Same thing with specific setbacks or step backs or buffers. Can we use clearer language that's kind of intentional, but doesn't prescribe an exact number of feet perhaps beyond which a building can't be located? Things like that, that I think revisit, small area plans, look at where the park connections slash expansion might be. Maybe that's something that shifts onto another property that's much bigger and able to accommodate that. So I think there's a lot of good ideas that we've thought about that were embedded in those planning processes. Now it's just a way to re-envision an alternative scenario to achieve those. And you're right, while those visual examples of what could happen here were helpful in a way, what they did not solve for is affordable housing. And I think our thinking in recent years of planning have elevated that to a top priority for this particular site, and therefore it's really upon us to be obligated to revisit that vision if this is in fact the current priority. So I think there's some reconciliation as opposed to throwing away those earlier visions. We're reconciling them to make sure that we're not ignoring them. Maybe that's the best way to put that.
And is there then a way, is there, is there then a way, you know, we kind of have the community input piece of this in the small area plan, but the driver is really like the RFPs. And so is there a way to incorporate or have the community conversations inform the RFP, what the RFP like looks like, right? So that it's not like, oh, this is a small area plan as people normally think about small area plans, because it does feel like, and I'm not, I'm not like using language in a provocative way for any particular reason, but like it feels a little like of a sham process compared to what it normally is when we, and at least we acknowledge upfront, we're doing it for a reason to like get them reconciled and not a small area plan as we traditionally think about a small area plan. And so I just want to be like more forthright in what we're doing, why we're doing it, why it needs to be on like the timeline it is, and ultimately like the public interest in like taking this approach. And also think of like, yeah, the twenty-seven versus twenty-eight in terms of like how do we get overall community buy-in importantly from neighbors to that property too? And like, does it make sense to potentially slow it down so that like we're a year out, but we are not like at war with one another over?
So I don't think the two are mutually exclusive. I think in our expectation, and when we return in January, I think some of the more granular schedule will highlight that that engagement is absolutely going to happen before the RFP is issued. In fact, we need to hear from folks before we can figure out exactly what we're asking people to respond to. And I think the development community would also really appreciate that because they don't want to go into some unpredictable, uncertain environment where they've not even heard any feedback from the community. So I think it really helps everyone out. And I think we may end up in the 2028 scenario if perhaps the 2027 year is too competitive and there's all these other projects that are potentially scoring higher than this might, and therefore we have no choice. But I think what we're trying to do is through a meaningful process, at least give ourselves a chance at the 2027 deadline, and if it falls through, it falls through. Like I said, after March of next year, two years from now, it's out of our control. But I think the next sixteen months, we do get to control, and I think we want to do it in a more strategic but meaningful engagement with the community.
Okay, so there you go. You have my initial thoughts, you know, which were pretty comprehensive, but I just want to do, you know, emphasize, right, that I want to make sure that in the Wesley process when we kept saying, we'll get back to you, that's phase three, that the people who kept hearing, we'll get back to you, it's phase three, are not like, oh, you know, full steam ahead, we have three months, and it's like over the holidays in the winter, and then like we're putting out RFPs.
The difference, I think, from the Wesley process is we didn't have a critical mass in units, right? So we really couldn't talk about what would go there because we didn't own as many units when we were engaged with Wesley. So now that we actually have more, I think I'm hearing loud and clear from Matt and Wyatt is that both of those processes, the small area plan light, as well as the RFP process would have ample community engagement. So that's, I think, what I see as the difference.
And I get, sorry, one last thing, and I know. I guess part of it, right, is that we can only control in this process the ends of Virginia Village because we can't think of like the middle hollowed out or the middle, right? Like they're separate property owners and they could decide what they want to do in the middle, and so it's not like we can guarantee as part of the community conversation, this is what a redeveloped Virginia Village looks like, because we kind of like can visualize it, but we have no control over what the center is and whether that becomes green space or whatever else.
I think it would benefit the conversation to think about it holistically. What would subsequent phases look like? Would, do we want them to be? I think as this goes forward and we learn more with the right exhibits and visuals, we can have a better estimate in terms of if the first phase of this approach is sizable enough that a certain amount of units beyond what's already there can be delivered and financed, how many more phases like that do we need for this site to deliver? And I think that dynamic changes the conversation from what else of the property that we may not currently own needs to be developed or perhaps could serve a different purpose, like a park expansion. And I, you know, over the winter, we'll have other engagements as well with the existing property owners that are still there. You know, what does that feedback look like? Does that inform some of our thinking along those lines where maybe some sites are less likely to ever redevelop based on the feedback we're getting and individual timelines folks may have? These are very private and personal decisions that we can't really predict. So all of that, I think, is going to inform that thinking, even though as we maybe update the site's vision, we may kind of use the back end of that process to really understand the implementation for the sites that we do control. So there might be kind of a, you know, let's think about it holistically, and then let's make sure that we are addressing at least what's on our ownership.
Thanks. I want to get to the other questions. I think I saw Alan, Meredith, Justine.
So let, let me get clear on exactly what the goal is for this RFP and redevelopment. Are you talking about an RFP for 202 to 208? Or are you talking about an RFP for the entire site?
All the parcels that are in our ownership.
So what does that mean into, well, first of all, let me step back for a second because I know that, that part of what, what the EDA is looking for is to be able to acquire all the sites. We'd love to be able to own all of the sites, and I'm putting something out there that, you know, drives people crazy, but the minute you do an RFP, that immediately is going to spike land prices. So that's going to make it difficult for, if our ultimate goal is to say that this entire site should be looked at as affordable housing, that's going to put a different twist on this entire property. The reason why I asked whether or not you're looking to do, and you said what we own is because I, I was hearing different conversations about what we're going to develop or what we aren't going to develop. If you're talking about maybe putting, I don't know, townhouses or something on the four that we own, and you can meet David's goals of getting to more affordable units than what we've got there, that may look like one thing. But if you're talking about putting a two FAR, for instance, across the entire site, and you're talking about over three hundred and sixty thousand square feet of development, which could end up delivering thirty or three hundred thousand square foot units. If that goes out in the RFP, that is going to really put us in a tough position in terms of being able to acquire the other sites or, or properties that are out there. If you're only talking about developing those that we've got, I'm not so sure that I would necessarily go the RFP route. What I've heard you talk about is that you've already had some discussions with architectural schools, you've got UVA, you've got Georgia Tech, you've got Mason that's got public policy. I would take some time because I think your timeline is a great idea to try and pull all this together, but I think you're way too aggressive in terms of what you can get accomplished in the period of time that we're talking about. Get those schools involved in doing a semester study where you get the architecture students working with the public policy students to come up with what would you do with these properties that we own, that the city owns, and what can we do with these? There is expertise there that can, that can do that for us. You don't have to get a developer to do that, okay? You can find the talent in this state to be able to do that kind of stuff. VCU has got an architectural school as well. I mean, there's lots of, of, I think, assets we can bring together to do that, and they'd love to come here, they'd love to bring a bus of kids up here to look at our sites and figure out what we can do. But I think if, if you start sending a message that you want to do RFPs and you want to get developers involved, that's going to send people up the wall, and that's going to send prices up the wall, and that's going to put us out of a market that we're not going to be able to afford in terms of saying that we want to do affordable housing. So just a quick thought. But I, I really think, you know, I like the idea of having a schedule to do things. I was a developer. I know how to deal with schedules. But the last thing I want to do is end up with an assembly that I don't control all that property and have a word get out there that this is all of a sudden going to be something bigger than what I just own, because that's going to hit me in the pocket and that's not where I want to be hit.
So I'm going to play devil's advocate, some of that. In my own research, as I was catching up to the history of this property, I think a lot of what I think you're associating with the RFP has already been publicly acknowledged through our staff reports, our status updates, similar work sessions like this. So I don't consider the RFP messaging as anything new publicly of what our intent is and why we started to acquire these properties to begin with. Additionally, and the other point that really stood out from what you just said, is if the RFP is informed by initial engagement with the community, and we feel like with the sites that we currently own or may by next spring, we may already have enough of a development yield to have that site delivered what we were hoping it delivers, and perhaps the planning guidance is set such that the remaining portions of the property maybe are better served as pub, uh, public park space, that also have a different and opposite effect on the property values in terms of how we want to engage and acquire those for a very different purpose. So I don't have a clear answer, but you're right, the impact will be there, but I'm trying to be more holistic in terms of what is the perception out there right now and what have we heard already from some of the property owners that we've been engaging with for acquisitions.
But even that statement that you just made, that implies then that you're going to be looking at additional density on the, the property that we do control. If you're sending some of it to parks and you're trying to get to a maximum number of, of folks that'll be living there, you gotta go up, you need more density in order to make up for the fact that you're putting other parts of the parcel into green space. I, I'm, if, first of all, you know this community, you're not getting through an RFP by the spring and have that be a discussion that this community gets comfortable with. I don't think it's going to happen. I mean, you can give it a shot, but it just scares me that we're going to end up spending a lot more time talking about this than, than actually coming up with schemes, which is why, again, I think if you get, I'll go back to the architecture schools, I'll go back to George Mason and the public policy, as long as this is an academic exercise, it puts you in a much better position than going professional with developers.
Maybe offline we can share with you, Alan. We actually did have something from George Mason produce that I think Matt referenced as well, but I want to get to other questions as well. Meredith?
Sorry.
So this is a great update. I'm really excited about this. For, in terms of, you know, not to make the process any more complicated, but thinking about what the RFP will be asking for. So for the Housing Commission has, we've created sort of general targets that were included in the Affordable Living Policy, but specifically looking at the types of units, like a combination of the, the sizes and the AMI levels of the units that are expiring, and looking at the makeup of the household sizes and AMI levels of, of families that are on, or households that are on the waitlist. We have both seen and recommended that for future units, there be a consideration for units at forty percent AMI, and that there be some consideration for units for larger families. I mean, we know obviously with the limit, but like, you know, I think Pearson Square is always in very high demand with the two and up to, I think there's some three bedrooms there. So I think if, if there's, is there any, is there any, is there going to be any like guidance on what types of requirements you want to have? Like, does it need to have some, you know, portion of affordable housing? Can we, is there any way to, to kind of target being able to fill some of those needs in, with, with a development?
I mean, those sound exactly like what we want to hear from folks that are going to be informing that. The range of affordability, presence of supportive housing, potentially a daycare, things like that, that kind of create, I think, a great synergy or mixture of uses in an affordable building, for example. Those would be great things to add in there to set expectations and kind of, again, push the creativity as far as we can.
Cool. Justine?
First of all, I just wanted to say this is a really exciting project. This is something we've been working on for years and years and years, and this is a real unique opportunity in the city. So it's great to finally see some sort of a plan and progress here on, on engagement. So thank you so much for that. I have a few questions, so especially on the zoning part. If we're going through and looking at the zoning of these properties, would we have to do it, would we basically do it on only the properties that we own? Wouldn't look to up-zone properties that we don't own? Is that correct?
That's kind of back to the other question where I think informed by our updated thinking, revisiting small area plans, and really just focusing in strategically on what is the best use and purpose of this property, and I think informed by how much housing, particularly affordable housing, a initial phase could deliver, how much more of that property would need to be dedicated for housing, especially affordable housing? And I think the answer to that might inform the level of zoning changes that are needed, and do we want to strategically focus on just our properties? But again, if we are clear in what the remainder of the property's vision might be, that might also yield additional answers about what their zoning is compared to what's there today.
Okay, but we wouldn't necessarily, we, we might have a vision for what we want to do, but we wouldn't necessarily change the zoning of the properties that we don't own until we own them. Does that make sense?
Correct. It, it wouldn't be necessary for the RFP to proceed.
Okay, and it wouldn't be necessary for planning documents either to have, I mean, I guess that's something that we can change at any point.
We can come back in a future time once additional parcels are acquired and consolidated.
Okay, that's great. And then in terms of the process of consolidating our, you know, the small area plan and, and the zoning plans and aligning them, is that something that's purely administrative? Is that something that's where there's engagement with the community? What exactly is the process for aligning the vision of all of these documents and timing of that?
So in our minds, a thoughtful engagement doesn't start with which documents we need to update. We can certainly use them to visualize what past thinking was, but a vision is a vision. I think we need to start there, we need to get honest feedback and hear from a lot of folks, not just the ones that live across the property line. And with that information, we, professional staff, can then tell them, okay, if that's your vision, if that's where you want this to go, here's what that means for these documents, and here's how many of them legally have to be updated for us to move forward.
Gotcha.
So some, you know, depending on our work program for next year, may take longer to update, some may have to be more immediate if this is going to stay on schedule.
Great, okay. And then my final question is, do we feel confident right now that there's, we have a big enough of a block for a phase one, or is that really something that we're going to get informed about from the RFP process? Or even just, I guess, offline talking to the development community? Because I noticed that there's like a big chunk in there that's missing in the corner, and so I guess, is that just a question mark right now?
Selfishly, my perspective is we have enough.
Okay.
But I'd love to have that backed up by others by January.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Great, Matt?
Okay, I think this is great. I love seeing it, I love hearing the concepts, the timeline, I think is incredibly aggressive. But I think there's one thing we need to really look at, and, and that's going to be, it's going to be the money. And I guess some of the questions I have relative to that is, do we intend to have this be a public-private partnership? Do we intend on selling the units we own to a potential partner, or do we look at contributing them?
So I'll jump in. You know, I think we, one of the things that we'll need to do is, is a financial analysis from a commercial real estate perspective with a specialty in affordable housing, kind of what, what is the financial stack for different development body typologies that would be needed? And go into this with some understanding of And go into this with some understanding of what the city contributions would need to be. From the discussions with Wesley, what was needed was the land contributed for free with a tax exemption. But that had not sort of gotten all the way through to a real pro forma with a, you know, development plan. So, as we're taking these steps, we'll need to continue that analysis and, but I think at a minimum, that's likely going to be what's required.
And I guess I ask that relative to how you're going to put a capital stack together to do something like this. I'm not a huge fan of Lytech. I think it's somewhat restrictive. I'd love to see, I think there are other ways to go about doing it. We certainly have the ability to issue bonds. We have the ability to contribute, you know, let's assume we get them all, we have 20, 25 million dollars of real estate. You can put a big chunk of that capital stack into a position that maybe with additional bonds, we can get to a point where it can be a public-private partnership and achieve something without limitations of Lytech. Not saying we should or we shouldn't, but I think there's something to be looked at where that is. I think we have to look that in consideration to some of the stuff that Mr. Snyder stated about, and we have 80 units now, are we going to get 160? Are we going to get 240? What's that density look like? How do we get there? But yet, keeping in mind Alan's comments, that you start putting those numbers out there, you're going to have really expensive property. I think there's ways to do it. I also think some of the issues relative to putting an RFP out, bringing somebody on, yet you haven't given, you haven't gone through the public process of rezoning, you haven't gone through whatever SE has to be done, yet that partner has an expectation as being with the city that this is a done deal. So how, how do you intend to manage that process? And I wouldn't, that is a concern of mine. I think the big thing is can we put out some sort of structure in concert with an RFP so people can understand how they're going to finance it? That is the number one problem you're going to have getting this done, is, and I get extremely idealistic on some of this stuff, and every time I get idealistic on it, I could talk to somebody like, hey, but how are you going to finance it? How are you going to finance it? How are you going to finance it? It's not financeable. And Lytech is certainly one answer. I question whether it's the right answer for this city on this parcel, especially if we already have a chunk of money committed to it and maybe we fill some of that capital stack in ourselves before we turn it over to a private developer. And I'll leave it at that, other than the rest of my notes.
Okay. Final questions? That's Dave again.
Let me just emphasize two major points. Number one, community engagement, especially the surrounding areas, is absolutely fundamental. It's not something that's supplemental to or adjunct to the RFP. It's going to happen or this project isn't going to go forward. Number two, I'm concerned about a capital stack that assumes significant taxpayer input because I don't want to create a backlash that we make living here unaffordable for some to make it affordable for others. And so, I'm really concerned about, and I appreciate Matt. Matt's extremely experienced in this, and I'm not challenging him at all, but I'm just saying, from my perspective, we ought to go into this recognizing there may be some taxpayer input, but I'm concerned that if we end up with a large amount, whatever that is, that will create a backlash because I think folks are already the obvious, we already have the highest tax rates in Virginia. A tax assessment combined with rates, I think nearly the top, if not the top in Virginia. And we could argue for the West, the West End Development, that our citizens were getting a high school. Here, if it appears that I'm spending my money to give somebody else affordable housing, you could undermine the whole effort. Just two suggestions going forward.
Thank you all. So, I think clearly you could tell that there's a lot of engagement by council, EDA, Housing Commission. I was, it's fitting that we started by talking about the adoption of the ALP, right? Because we talked, we set these really ambitious goals of what our community would like to see in terms of affordable housing. And I think while we've said that this is a pretty ambitious timeline, I think it's appropriate to match these ambitious goals. I think this is one of those projects very much where we should put our money where our mouth is. Like, are we actually going to commit to doing something here because we've adopted these goals unanimously by this council? And so, while ambitious, I would like to see us, you know, target that March 2027 Lytech date. Obviously, community engagement, other kind of principles that we've talked about in terms of transitioning to adjacent neighborhoods, the mixed income, combination of for-profit or nonprofit, all those principles I think need to get wrapped into the discussion. But overall, I think you hear support for kind of doing something with the site, and so I think, I want to make sure that's very clear to staff, is that I think there is definitely support to move forward. I think we've talked enough now for four years, and now that we've gotten to critical mass, it's exciting that we actually have next steps identified. So thank you to staff for working through that and getting us to this point. Great. I think we're going to move on to MOU now?
We have the last item is to discuss a basic term sheet for a memorandum of agreement between the city and the Economic Development Authority. And I'll hit just some of the highlights on it, and I do want to acknowledge right from the beginning that the EDA has not reviewed this in any formal sense. I felt my obligation was first to speak with the city council, let you know that we were putting this together, get your input on it, and then we would discuss it with the EDA and then come back to you in December. So, what the memorandum of agreement touches on are three, you know, big things. One is the, sorry, trying to call it up on my computer. Maybe, if you could scroll down just a little bit to the, to the grid. So property management, financial management, and then the ultimate conveyance of the properties in the future. The, those are the kind of the three big areas that we try to address just at the term sheet level. And so, on behalf of the EDA, the city does the following things. We are contracting with ProMax for the management of the properties as well-maintained, committed affordable housing. The rents are set in accordance with the city's affordable dwelling unit policy. We would, the city would administer the relocation policy for maintenance activities or in the future redevelopment, and then provide insurance. And Versa is their insurer. They have been onsite, they have toured these properties, and I think that's important to acknowledge as well. Financial management, the, currently the rent is being held in account. It is under the name of the EDA, and so the MOU would spell out what those funds can be used for, and those are really exclusively for four things. Maintenance of the properties, acquisitions for additional properties, consultant services for all the activities that we just described, and the Economic Development Authority would be permitted to have a return on equity for the $475,000 that the EDA still has invested in this project. That return on equity would be CPI plus 1%. The, also, we note the HUD grants. This is heavily grant-financed endeavor, and the city would manage those. Then in the future, the EDA would have title to future acquisitions, and those future acquisitions would be governed by the MOA. The EDA, and then these provisions are already enshrined in the covenants, but some of the early conveyances to the EDA don't have the detail in the covenants that the later acquisitions do. So we think it's worth articulating in the MOA that, the understanding that the EDA is going to comply with the city council's direction on the future disposition of the properties. And I think that's important, for that to be understood at the beginning and throughout this. And so I've expressed it in sort of a non-legalist way, but we'll try to paper this correctly. But the EDA basically gives its pre-agreement to the city council. The city council decides to convey it to another party that the EDA will be on board with that. Similarly, you know, with the Wesley idea, there was an idea of putting liens on the property to put out, to have access to additional capital. If the city council were to direct that, the EDA would not object to that. And the EDA would not put any other liens on the property without the city council's consent. So that's the basic idea. There's probably other things that we'll discuss with the EDA when we sit down together. And tonight, the purpose is, are there key things that the city council would like to see in this agreement?
Okay. Input for Wyatt. Dave?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Wyatt, can you scroll up a little bit to, yeah, there. What specifically will the EDA's function be going forward versus the city's function in doing the RFP and going through exactly what we've been talking about tonight? I presume we are not delegating that to the EDA, and I'm not sure the EDA wants to take all that on. So are we clear enough about that? Keep going up. I think, I think that question is raised.
So in the process map that Matt walked us through, we have the city council issuing the RFP.
Uh huh.
And the city council appointing the selection committee for the RFP. The city council may decide to have a representative or several representatives of the EDA on the selection committee, but that would be the city council's decision.
And the city council will assure the community input that we've talked about?
Yeah, the city council's going to basically own that process, and so that is not delegated to the EDA.
Like at West Falls, for example, the EDA officially owns that property. We very much were in the driver's seat and the RFP process is there.
Yep. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's clear. Are we clear enough about that in the term sheet?
We'll, we'll make sure it is. I mean, the way I would be approaching this with the EDA is that the EDA is performing a crucial function of holding title to these properties.
Yep.
And, and from the policy perspective, the city council is in the driver's seat.
Yep. Agree.
I see head nods from the EDA, but Wyatt, you're going to go to the EDA meeting in December to share this with them, right?
December 2nd.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jim?
I just want to say, this has been in the works for a long time. I know the manager has worked on this with Ross's chair, and the whole, EDA has discussed this, needing to do this for a long time, so this is a very important step for us. And I think, from the first blush, I think, you know, we're most likely going to be in agreement. Maybe there's a few things we can talk about, but I think it's a good document. We've been waiting to work with the manager on this, and it's an exciting thing for us to move forward.
Great. Thank you. Aaron?
I just have one quick one. I'm comfortable with this and like understand why we're doing it in terms of sort of these terms. The one thing that I would prefer to remove, if possible, is in this duration category, at the very bottom, the second sentence of the first bullet says it's, you know, MOA is in effect until the EDA no longer owns the property. And then this, it's the intention of the city and the EDA that the properties will be conveyed to a private party within the near future. And I just don't want to like pre-ordain or prejudge this. I, you know, I get what we're saying. We obviously just had this whole conversation, but I would just rather strike the language so that it's cleaner and the term sheet's the term sheet, and I don't think that sentence needs to be there for purposes of like an agreement. So I would appreciate removing it.
People fine with that? Okay. Okay. Other comments? Okay. I think we're done with Virginia Village for the night?
Thank you, council.
Thank you, the EDA, and I don't think we have the Housing Commission anymore. So we're at 9:45. Do we, and we've got a really quick thing on CDVG because we just talked about it. Can we just be done with that? And then do we need a break before we get to tree and ledge program?
Yeah, so we had thought we had covered CDVG and home with Brendan's presentation.
Do we need any final questions on that one? We're good? With the recommendation the Housing Commission to allocate to Housing Corporation? Okay.
We can do the tree. I mean...
You want to do the tree, want to?
I think there's just so much agreement on doing maximum that we can. I don't know how much more...
But there's like more to the presentation now. I don't know.
There's some details there. All right. Thank you.
If we do it in 15 minutes and take a break at 10? Let's limit us to that.
I was just thinking we could do it before and then break.
Before break.
And then get back to ledge. Not trying to short-circuit it, just that we...
Done the interval.
I think we're done on Virginia Village. You're welcome to stay. We were debating whether we get to tree canopy as the next item or break. Well, since Charles is here, let's try to get to tree canopy and then, then we'll break before the ledge program and the closed session.
And I'll do a quick little preamble. So, Mr. Prince, thank you for your work on this and for the urban forestry commission's recommendations on this. So the council did an initiating resolution about a month ago, and now what's before council is code language to enact what was discussed. And Mr. Prince has a, I think, a short presentation, and then we will answer any questions that the council might have.
And Charles, I guess my suggestion is, if we can just talk about what's new, since we've talked about, I feel like the 10% commercial canopy requirement twice now, that would be great.
Of course, yeah. We'll be fairly brief. I'm just going to share just a quick, some quick information. Kirk's going to kick us off about some information we found that we thought would be relevant to this conversation. As soon as...
Welcome, Kirk and Cameron.
Thank you. Pravmas. All right. Ready to kick off here? Let's do it. Okay. Yep. Thank you. Okay, so we, we'll be brief on the front end here. Thank you all for having us tonight. We're going to talk about the commercial tree canopy research, following up on, as you mentioned, the previous two meetings. Just quicker, working. Want to just tap through for me? Okay, so the agenda for tonight, the background, which we'll go through pretty briefly, and then we'll get into some of the new items and talk about what to do next. Go to the next slide. Okay. So we just wanted to highlight that tonight is the work session in bold there, and then the following two meetings are first reading on the 24th and city council final consideration on the 26th. Go to the next slide. Tree canopy benefits, we've seen these before. We did add a new bit of information on the right there about trying to quantify tree canopy benefits in the city. So, we thought that was a good addition to try to think about in quantitative terms rather than qualitative. There we go. Now this is working. And then we just want to highlight that we have looked at these standards before, but there's not currently a requirement for overall tree canopy percentage. And we've seen this table before as well, just highlighting recent tree canopy percentages on recent projects, with a few projects being below the 10% number that we'll discuss. And here's the new information.
Yeah, and here's, we just found somewhat of what local neighbors are doing. Arlington, they get some of the highest, 35%, depending on the project. Seems like most of these are coming through special exception where they're asking for more than what, they're asking for what they want for each property. A lot of our other neighbors are still at 10%, including the smaller jurisdictions like Fairfax and Vienna.
I think to Matt's point is that the 10% hopefully is the floor and that we can always negotiate higher, but let's establish the floor. Is that TLDR?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And so here, we're just showing again kind of where our tree canopy is and kind of more importantly, where it isn't. We're not seeing a lot in our commercial corridors. This is 2014 GIS data, so this is a little bit older, but we're hoping to get some newer So here is the kind of more important trending data that we found. This is not through city data, this is through all, everything we're able to scrub. And if you see in the right-hand column there, that's just showing a trending loss between the first-year data set and the second-year data sets, and it's about 1% to 2% loss, which is fairly significant for places as small as we are. And this is from the Chesapeake, Chesapeake Tree Canopy Network. COG seems to be leaning towards using this as their main data set. As you can see, we did gain six acres, 6.2 acres, but we did lose 16 acres, so a net loss of 10 acres over the study period. And this just came out in July of 2025.
What's the gain in the middle, the green blob? What's the gain in the middle, the green blob?
In the hexagonal.
Yeah, like, I assume that's the gain, right?
Yeah, it, it doesn't specify exactly where it is. It'd be interesting to do an overlay to see kind of where that is in the city. But some of, so the gains in green may be tree cover. It takes about 10 to 15 years for tree canopy to show up on LiDAR data sets. We're trying to get some more information on that and to have a better explanation than that. So it could be a delayed effect.
I mean, I would say the one that's two to the left is, we bought fellows. So it wasn't public land before, and then you bought it. So does that act, like, when you acquire land, does that show up as added tree canopy for public land or not?
No, it would've shown up as a big deficit of tree canopy had it been redeveloped into seven houses. But since it was preserved, the tree canopy was already there.
So it doesn't count whether it's, like, public land or anything?
They took out that whole chunk of trees in the back.
For the sewer line, that's right.
And this here, this just shows the different census blocks or areas of the city where we gained or lost canopy. It's kind of a more fine-toothed version of where we, we saw data law, sorry, tree canopy loss. And the, the column in the right is where the gain and loss column. So if you can see, over the five years, between 2018 and 2013, in this particular chart, we lost approximately 20, 28 acres. But again, we don't know what resolution all these different data sets are using, and so we're trying to sift through to get better numbers to bring out to you.
The highest percentage is in Broadmont, where the
Residential redevelopment pace has been fastest.
So this next table is one staff produced internally. As Charles mentioned earlier, this is going off of 2014 GIS data. I believe Fairfax initiated a, a project that was, looked at all of New Orleans Tree Canopy, and which gives us a snapshot of the city's coverage then. This was holding those figures up against how the city has changed over the past 11 years. It kind of breaks down, looking at special exception sites, take up about 2% of the total city's land and impact only about estimated 0.7% of its tree canopy coverage. Looking at the remaining commercial areas in the city, it's about 21% of the city's total area and about 6.7% of its tree canopy coverage. Next, we looked at single-family homes and those parcels, which were approved for grading plans in the past 11 years. These 300 parcels made up 7.7% of the city's land, but contained 11% of its tree canopy. The remaining residential parcels account for 69% of the city's total land and house 81% of its tree canopy coverage. Where do I point at that? Oh, there we go. I'll just go back one, sorry. This was the same map that Charles had shown earlier, but this illustrates that 2014 data to show the split. Anything that was within the blue lines is revitalization area, commercial. 23% of the city's land, and everything outside is the 77%, remaining primarily low and medium-density residential sound areas. And now, taking that and putting over top of it the SEs and grading plans. You can see the SEs in blue. We had seven total over the last 11 years and approximately 300 grading plans shown in the red outlined boxes. And again, this kind of is reiterating that the proposal for this amendment is only addressing commercial properties, however we want to deliver within the broader context to show that the commercial development sites are not where majority of the tree canopy loss seems to be coming from in the city, just because a lot of the trees are not located within those commercial areas. And as an example of one such grading plan, residential canopy is often lost for older homes are refurbished and expanded, larger lots are subdivided, redeveloped. This site is a typical redevelopment of a single-family home, which meets the coast standard of preserving 20% tree canopy coverage. In addition to the home expansion, you can see on the top right, there's also a stormwater device installed, which is, often contributes to reduction canopy for projects like this. And you can imagine this, you know, not always this extreme, but multiplied by 300 over the course of a decade. And finally, we'll look at the commercial example. Modera Development was the lowest SE performer, achieving 4% of tree canopy, including the 25% native bonus. A large part of this was due to the loss of the buffer against the residential area in the south, which was not replanted elsewhere on-site. And in the future, given the code amendment we're proposing, the city would be able to require additional 6% for any project like this coming forward if it met sub-10%. That's all we have. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Questions for staff? Comments? Art?
I have quite a few, 'cause I've didn't have a chance on previous time. First of all, I think this does a really good way of saying that if we're talking about improving the overall tree canopy of the city, we're talking about the residential, which we're not talking about with this. But the tree canopy in the commercial districts, I think, has a tremendous effect on the sense of place, that we are a tree city, and so it spreads out. So even if the numbers are not there for the amount of trees, I think the, the, the need for the trees is that sense of place, the sense of the character of the city. One of, and part of that, and what I really like in the proposal, is this exclusion of the street trees, so that we make sure that those are there. That's a way to get us above the 10%. I think that's a, a major piece of what this proposal has. And when I look at that, it brings up, one of my, one of the things I noticed on this is that it does not cover T1. Covers T2, but T1 seems to have been addressed separately during that process. However, if we're changing the definition of what trees are included in the calculation, then, and we want to have consistency, I think we need to be looking at T1. And I even look at the development chart here. I would love to see the projects. I would love to see the tree canopy numbers for the two new townhouse projects on Park. Where do those stand as far as on-site with street trees, without street trees? There's a lot of people who are very concerned about the look of that and the feel of it. And is that, it, it seems to me by leaving T1 out, we're creating two standards there. And I'd rather have us, for simplicity, ease going forward, consistency, that I would like to see T1 included, even if it does, even if it had, was more recent and did include it, we've got a consistency here.
Can we pause on that one, 'cause I think Sally actually gave us guidance on what the tree canopy requirements are in the T zones? Because previously, to our T-zone updates, T zones actually had no tree canopy requirement on it, and I think we added what was allowed by state code. So what's on there already is the maximum allowed by state code.
So this one, so, but including it in here, I think would then be a no change.
This is just for commercial. We only have authority to do 10% on commercial.
So it would be no change. I would say we, there's no harm in going, giving people one place to look for all of, and if it's, the T zones, either both T1 and T2 are commercial, or
They're T, they're not commercial. There's a different zoning district. So they have its own canopy requirements per what's allowed by state.
But T2 is in here.
I guess I'll let Sally speak to.
Yeah.
I was just gonna clarify that I think council member-elect is saying T2 is in, in the ordinance, but T1 is not. And so asking why the differential treatment?
Sure. So T1 and the rest of the zones that are mentioned in this are all on the same chart. So I think the difference in using street trees as part of the calculation, that's possibly a policy decision, not necessarily something that would be codified. I think that's more policy, because I'm not sure if we are able to clarify that clear yet. Matt, I'm not sure if you have any input on that. But I believe, so T1 already has the minimums that went through the teasing process, but T2 and the rest do not. But it's all in the same chart in the code section. So if you look at the code markup that's in there, T1 is in there, and all the markups are filling up, all the minimum tree canopies are filling up the rest of the zones that did not have any.
So I think it's that definition of what's included that's, would, if we're saying we're not going to include street trees in the calculations here, would that definition also apply to the T1? And then my other question on the definition is around the native trees and kind of, my opinion is that if we want to encourage native trees, we include them. If you don't want native, if you, and just say, only native trees count, I think developers would be like, oh, all right, I'm gonna pick this tree instead of that tree.
So I think one way to put a final point on that is, this process that's tentatively looking to conclude in late January is going to allow us to ask for as much as the state will permit us to ask for. And that will bring all zoning districts into alignment with what that permission level is. As we do that, and we look ahead into next year's work program, we will be more holistically looking at how through our other policy documents outside of the city code, can we start to set higher goals for all properties? And what does that look like? What are the trade-offs? How do we reconcile that with competing priorities, depending on where we are in the city? But for now, and as the staff report is capturing, particularly, I think you guys had it up in that table, T1s already have regulations that allow us to reflect what the state allows us to ask for. So there was no need to, as part of this effort, to update that.
And if I may add to that, so what's on screen right now is, if you look in the table, there's a letter beside the tree canopy minimums. This here is what that stands, or sorry, the number 20. So that's what that stands for here. So we are including that language, actually, to include T1 as well.
Yeah, and that actually confused me, 'cause it's like, depends on use and density proposed, and I'm like, and then somewhere else, it also was like 15, but I thought 10 was the maximum.
Depends on density, so it, that's where we refer back to state code.
I was getting confused by all of that and didn't really understand that, which raises the last question I had, which is, we, we're talking about raising it to the maximum that Virginia allows, which is the 10%. If Virginia increases that to 15 or 20%, let's hope, would this automatically increase to that level, or would we have to update this?
No, we tied it straight to state code. Again, the last line here, tree canopy coverage minimum shall follow minimum standards listed in Regent Code section. So if Virginia changes their code, it changes our code.
Okay.
But I do think we probably would have to repeat this process for that to happen. I don't think we can change the ordinance by in that manner without another public hearing and, and this process being repeated.
Okay. Laura, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Thanks so much for this presentation. I just wanted to thank you for, we've, in the staff report, you had, or you, you and the staff had gone back and looked at, which is, I was interested in what the surrounding jurisdictions were doing. And I just wanted to point out that I really liked what Arlington was doing, where they, it's up there on the screen, yeah, where they have a higher tree canopy requirement, the larger, the taller the building is, or the bigger the building is. So the, you see in the Arlington County, that last sentence or two there. So I think that's a great example. I, I really liked that, so I think that's something that we should keep in mind. And I just appreciate you looking at our, you know, surrounding jurisdictions and what they're doing. Thanks a lot.
I'd like to thank you again. Hopefully, Charles, you're gonna do this slide deck on Wednesday, maybe at the Urban Forestry Commission meeting? Yeah?
Most likely, yeah.
Thanks, 'cause I think people would be interested in seeing it, both to, you know, confirm, as expected, that we're moving forward with the 10% minimum, just to get, you know, the baseline, like, the floor that we want. But also, in thinking about both the ledge program that incorporates some of these ideas, but things that, you know, we can think of for council priorities and Urban Forestry Commission priorities, this continued, you know, looking to other jurisdictions and neighboring jurisdictions, despite what seemingly are constraints of state code, yet others have figured out, you know, ways to set, you know, much higher goals, given the needs that we really need, and ways to incorporate this into guiding documents. I think for Art's questions, what I had remembered from the planning commission conversation, I think Mr. Stevens had looked at one of the site plans for the park, one of the park developments. It may have been the Park and Oak one, or it could be Park and Lee. I think it was Park and Oak. And on the 10% that they were able to do, given the density of the residential piece of that T1 development, it was only 3% on-site trees, and 7% of that 10% is in the street trees. So it will be really great, kind of moving forward, that this incorporates those trees moving onto lots, so that as site plans are coming forward, even within the same districts that we're seeing on-site, you know, plantings, as opposed to everything getting pushed to the curb, 'cause it is something that I think city residents are, you know, reacting to, and regardless of where the tree loss is, like, they're, they're internalizing tree loss citywide. When you see breaking down to A through G, every single one of those districts, regardless of how you're slicing the city, is having acreage loss in tree canopy overall. And also, I know it isn't part of this conversation, but really wanted to thank you for including the numbers, just in terms of which programs you use, 'cause it's something that urban forestry has been frustrated with over time. But I think especially if we're talking about, you know, the metropolitan Washington COG, 50% target, that we're talking about it consistent with, like, what their numbers are. And we're not saying, we're, we're at 49 in one system, and they're saying, get to 50, but their numbers, using their system, have us at 40, and we're trying to get to 50. So just, you know, making sure that we have some consistency, recognizing that none of these numbers are perfect, but that, you know, we're moving toward these goals and may have more work ahead of us. And, you know, that's part of the ledge program, to see how we get there. So thanks.
And just real quick on that point, part of what we all identified as the inevitability to get to that point and have the consistency and be able to track our own patterns is to just get our hands on our own data. I think there's like four or five different sources that we were utilizing. And I think one of the best ways to get away from that, and maybe use it more of a, kind of a verification, is to have our own GIS data, and potentially even partner with surrounding jurisdictions who do regular flyovers. Maybe there's a way to tap into that resource. They're clearly not stopping photography at the boundary, and know what they can see. So I think there's some potential there, and to be efficient and mindful of tax dollars.
Great, thanks. Dave?
Just one quick comment. Thanks for this initiative. I asked some graduating seniors from high school once what they remembered most about the city, and they said the trees. And so that really underscored that the trees and the tree canopy is something that differentiates us from the other region and makes us attractive. So thanks for this effort.
Just two quick points, actually, building off of what Aaron said, 'cause my questions actually were like, what is our actual tree canopy percentage, if it's not 49%? And then how do we do a better job measuring it going forward? Do we have a sense, based on all these new sources, what a more realistic percent is?
Yeah, I would say lower 40s, probably around 41% would be my, after going through all this data, that, that would be my best guess.
And then based on that, I think it was line 29 of the staff report, that actually says we had set a goal of 50%, based on the COG regional goal of 50%. And I actually went back to that COG report, reread it. Interestingly, the core jurisdictions actually are only at 35% tree canopy. The inner jurisdictions, i.e. Fairfax County, is at 51%, and then the outer ones, Loudon, Frederick, Prince William, are actually only at 51%. And so I guess the question is, if we're in the low 40s, and even that blended, you know, 50% for the whole region includes those outer, very green lush areas like Frederick County, Loudon County, is 50% even realistic or achievable for us?
I say let's treat it like our climate goals and continue to aspire toward, you know, numbers that may seem beyond our reach, but we should, like, always be pushing toward.
Yeah, I'm happy to have ambitious goals. I would just wanna go back to then, this chart that I took a picture of, or this slide that has, that shows where the commercial districts are, the green essentially outside of those, and say, like, does the math actually get us there, right? Like, if majority of our tree canopy is actually outside our commercial areas, we currently don't have authority Like if majority of our tree canopy is actually outside our commercial areas, we currently don't have authority beyond the 20% in 10 years, don't have authority to preserve mature trees at that. The only authority we have currently is 10% in commercial areas. Is 50% such an ambitious goal that we can never get there? I want to be ambitious, but also realistic, right?
And could I participate in that part of the conversation? The statute that I believe that we're operating under 961.3 out of Title 15.2 does have provisions in it that allow for tree banking and tree funds so that if you can't get trees that are required on the site that's being developed, there's these other opportunities to collect what might have been owed to the city in that way and put it elsewhere.
Or we've done that. I feel like we have a tree canopy fund that we've had developers contribute into. It sounds like we've done that before, but anyway, sorry.
I think more broadly, what your last point gets to is staff's ability to effectively negotiate with the development community. And if our goals are not as aggressive, if that isn't reflected in all of our policy documents, small area plans, streetscape standards and the code, we can't really even expect them to react in a way that I think helps us meet that. So in some ways, I don't look at it as much as how realistic is it? I view it as something that helps me negotiate more effectively and allow the tree canopy conversation to go beyond just the first ask and allow us to kind of keep them honest because how important it is. So the more we can highlight it, the more documents that it lives in, the more I think we actually have a chance at maybe getting something better than absent of that.
So I guess on that point, similar to housing, I would encourage us to have better data and be able to measure, right? So it's really hard to know whether you're making progress unless you have a good source of data. So I'm gonna make another plug for NVRC. As they're doing strategic planning, they're looking for asks from localities on where it might make sense to share resources. This is probably one where we can ask like, hey, all of Northern Virginia, you probably don't have a great source of tree canopy calculations either. Maybe it makes sense for us as a region to go in and figure out how to get photography done rather than rely on all these other third parties. That might be a place that would benefit all of us. And so I would encourage us to talk to NVRC about that. Any final thoughts? Thank you. I guess we look forward to first reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're now at 10:15. Do we want to take a quick break? Aim for five minutes? Is that enough? Ten was too long last time, I think, because then we just kept talking. Five, okay.
Thursday. I know that council has, several council members have talked to our delegate and Senator. I have talked to our delegate and they're still working on the priorities. I'm hearing a lot of things aligned, but they don't know which ones yet for bills. And I meet this Wednesday with Senator Saleem and his staff on their priorities and some of the bills that I'll mention tonight that they're thinking about. I'm gonna come back to discussing in more detail, but you'll see at line 39, some of the new concepts are the split rate taxation, parking code minimum threshold elimination, the tree canopy that we were just talking about, and increasing fines for all moving speed and violations because they're currently flat going back to 2016. Lines 45 to 65 continues some of our key priorities that council identified last year. The state fully funding their obligations, increasing WAMADA funding pursuant to DMV moves and SJ28, which there was action today at the cog and WAMADA boards. I'll ask Councilman Snyder to speak on that in a moment. And of course, energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emission kind of targets for bills. I will say this year we had a great amount of community input from our boards and commissions as well as citizens, and so that is great. I actually received a letter from Vipis today, as did council from the city clerk forwarded. It was predominantly related to the tree canopy, but there, on the ordinance that you all were just discussing, but their closing statement was to continue working with the state legislation to increase capacity. So I will incorporate that in the ledge programs, community input that you'll see on Monday. The Falls Church City Public Schools ledge program is on their agenda for tomorrow evening. I downloaded, downloaded their posting to board docs this afternoon. And I will also incorporate that after their vote. It does look very consistent with what's drafted in the ledge program and issues of last year in terms of funding J Lark studies and teacher training, for example. This ledge program will also endorse NVTA, NVTC's positions. Those links are in the staff report. Right now they're in draft, but will be finalized soon. The VML ledge program was adopted while we were all down at the conference. And the only thing I wanted to highlight is that with Northern Virginia's advocacy, specifically City of Falls Church, Arlington and Alexandria, the affordable housing position received more priority and focus to get more tools from the state and balance the state and locality partnership. So I want to thank the advocacy for that down in Richmond. And what was positive is it got a second from another part of the state, so it wasn't just a one-region focus on affordable housing. With that, I'd like to turn to the attachment one, which is your actual ledge program. And I'll just highlight a few things. And like I mentioned, I'd like to get some council direction on a few good, important priority issues, which is kind of exciting that this isn't just a pro forma. We've got some important things to talk through. On the federal front, which is at line 92, I just wanted to highlight some of the continued things that we've been talking about in terms of federal budget to continued discretionary or directed funding that we can access. We've been very successful with those grants for affordable housing, stormwater, EV vehicles. And so in the ILDO, we'll have that with future federal budgets and ongoing. Dedicated funding for WAMADA operational capital funding and restore the UASI funding that's been cut. That's the Urban Area Security Initiative funding. 90% of the cog region's UASI funding has been cut by the federal administration. And that is really significant for our emergency alert systems, our operability of one unit of radios and so forth. I'm gonna pause before I leave federal because it also ties to state, but I'll just touch on the DMV moves and SJ28. Councils received communication that the General Assembly's Task Force on Funding for WAMADA, VRE, PRTC and the Northern Virginia Transit Systems has been approved by that General Assembly and advocating for funding for WAMADA for the gap fill for FY27. So there's not 153 million shortfall. And then FY28, funding dedicated new funding of 400 million going forward, capital operating. That is consistent with the DMV moves recommendation that went to the cog board and the metro board today for vote in action. And both Councilor Connolly and Snyder were there, so I thought I would just pause if you want to share the outcome of that with your colleagues.
Yeah, just to thank Councilmember Connolly who was there, we sort of split the meeting between the two of us. The cog board and the metro board both voted overwhelmingly to support the DMV moves project, which commits the region to additional support for metro in the future to maintain what I think if you've ridden metro lately, you can tell that it's a very different and much better system than it was five years ago. The trains are reliable, they're clean, they're considerably safer, and it really is back to being a world-class system. So we voted in favor and spoke in favor of the DMV moves. Previously, last week, the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, the commission unanimously endorsed both the DMV moves and the SJ28. Now, that will mean increased taxation, I'll be honest about it, increased taxation and funding for metro and the local for and support for the local transit systems and VRE as well as metro. There'll be a lot of regional work going forward to figure out the allocation and what tax levers are best used by which jurisdictions. But that's kind of where we are today. This is sort of a once-in-a-generational confronting an issue that's been around for years and will only get worse in the future if we don't take action now. So that would be my best comment on it. Mary Beth Connolly, do you have anything else you want to add?
I'll just add that in addition to the increased funding, I was really impressed with the conversations around all of the different transit systems that we have, VRE and in Maryland and bus services and how there's a commitment that they will also be working together in a much more holistic way than they ever have in the past to serve the people who need to ride.
And I would add there are commitments by metro for both safety and sort of efficient operations commitments in the future. So I'll turn it back to Cindy.
Thank you both for getting it to the final vote as we move forward. I think both efficiency and reducing operations is important balanced with increased revenue. So it's not just asking for more money. Ms. Connolly?
There was also a decision to standardize some of the services that metro offers. And one of the things that we've discussed as a council is getting more of our students on buses. And that is included in the program and they would like to standardize the way those programs are run across all of their jurisdictions right now. There's one in Montgomery County that's different, Fairfax County that's different from DC. And they'd like to be able to offer free bus service to anyone 18 and under, starting in fiscal year 27, soon.
Like nine months from now.
Nine months from now, yeah.
And a key point of that is fare free, but it still costs to run that. So we will see it in the proposed budget for WAMADA. But not so much us, but other localities are already doing their different programs. So we'll just have to see what the impact is to the overall budget, but it's nominal compared to the other parts of the WAMADA budget.
And, and it overall includes bus improved, maintaining and improving bus service as well as rail. So that's a key element here to this whole overall plan.
Great. Thank you for serving on the DMV moves. It's important for the region.
So for the sort of six key items that I would like to highlight to get council's direction and then of course glad to answer any questions or feedback on the rest of the document. The first one would be at line 113, and this is Senator Saleem's proposed legislation regarding parking that would remove local authority to set a minimum number of parking spaces. I do have a meeting with him and his chief of staff this Wednesday to talk through a little bit more to understand his key goals and outcomes and can we achieve there with some other options instead of just eliminating the minimum threshold and all built-out localities, trying to have one size fits all. Always been good for conversations like with the accessory dwellings. How can we get to something that works through the legislative process? So some of the things I've shared is like one size doesn't fit all. Is there another way to incentivize encouraging parking reforms? So it encourages more affordable housing and that it's affordable. How can we look at redevelopment and rehab versus new, so minimize neighborhood impact, but try to have better parking? I think one of the things that he would like to see is updating codes. And certainly we all are committed to updating the parking code, but having it done by next September is a pretty challenge with the community. September is a pretty challenge with the community engagement that one would want to do for the impact of that. So I propose like maybe we consider a delayed enactment. And if it's enacted and the locality stepped up, then you were grandfathered in.
Yes, Cindy, before you have that conversation with Senator Salim, I guess I want to hear what council's position is.
Exactly. That's why we're talking about it tonight, because there are positive reasons to do it. And so it's not a all or nothing. So we can support the bill as he's put forward. And I had previously emailed out the proposed language, and it was before the Legislative Committee. Support it, oppose it, hybrid, study it. And I would like council's direction so I know what to put in your ledge program for next Monday, which fortunately I'll also talk to the Senator the day before we put in your packet.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just, just here's a suggestion that, and I know some may agree with the objective. It's another one that takes away local authority, so I'm concerned about that. I think Cindy is proposing a middle way of working with the Senator so that he understands our issues, so it isn't a one-size-fits-all approach. So if it, I've, my recommendation is we would, we would, we would be neutral on the bill. I think some folks probably don't want us to oppose it. I couldn't really support it, but I am interested in working with the Senator to see what we can do to get some additional flexibility in it. That would be my suggestion.
Other thoughts? Erin?
I agree with Councilmember Snyder. I think as a matter, like as a general matter, I wouldn't like us to remove local authority. And I understand why, you know, the Senator does this and sort of spurring localities into action to get ahead of, you know, a prohibition on what we can do in our code. Like personally, I don't think it's the best approach. I mean, depends on your objectives, but in terms of working with like the localities themselves and sort of this positioning that we get into with one another. But yeah, I, I think the best I could be, at most, I guess I would say, I feel like I could be neutral on this one, especially given sort of the concerns we hear. And we often, you know, are citing that 2020 study and whether or not we actually have saturated like parking areas or not. And I think just, you know, we need to, to update that before we're relying on it to say what like the state of art parking truly is. And we're also relying on agreements with private parties for parking that isn't truly city parking. And so I think we can definitely make improvements within our code, but I don't want to remove our authority over this issue.
Yes, I heard two neutrals. I guess to clarify, removing parking minimums doesn't actually remove parking, it just removes the mandates. Other thoughts? Justine?
I was gonna say, I have had a lot of conversations with folks in Arlington. And Matt, you can speak to it much more clearly than I about where parking minimums have been reduced and how that has impacted development for both housing and for businesses and infill and how, you know, just how well it seemed to work based upon, you know, my end of 10 conversations with folks who live or work in, in Arlington. I'm a little uncomfortable with agreeing, opposing, supporting when I don't know what the language you're discussing with the Senator. Like we don't have the language to actually agree or support or oppose right now. We have the language we have, but if the Senator's making changes, I'm also hesitant to say one way or the other too. But anyway, I don't know if you have some comments on that with your experience in Arlington and how the market has delivered parking that, you know, if you're a developer, you're not going to build something that doesn't have enough parking to support the apartments or condos or businesses you're trying to build there. And how has that worked in Arlington?
When it's done near transit-rich environments, it has a chance to succeed because the lower parking is offset by other modes of travel that will still make that project marketable. What you also need, though, in those instances is a healthy residential park, parking program that makes sure the neighborhoods are protected from overflow, which is often created when, you know, developers decouple the rent cost with the parking cost and human behavior just finds the cheapest option available to them, which is usually outside the building. So all those different things play into it. And then we get into opinions about letting the market dictate how much parking is the right number, so.
Other thoughts? Justine?
Yeah, it's funny because this is a parking proposal, but I really see this as a housing proposal because, you know, Northern Virginia is, I think one estimate I saw was short by 200,000 homes in our region. And so how do you help make more homes get built? And like one way is to reduce the burden on, on some of these housing developments. And so, yeah, like I, I guess to be able to do that, reducing the, the amount of parking that they're required to have, and I think we've seen in our code that sometimes the amount of parking that localities require is absurd. So, and, and we even looked, you know, deep in our code, and we had things for horse stables and other things like that, that, that just didn't make sense. So some of this is antiquated, set in the 1960s. So what I like about this is that, as Erin mentioned, it's sort of like the ADU bill, it sort of lights a fire to your localities to actually start looking at this rather than having this be something that they, they push off from year to year. So to Debbie's point, yeah, I, I would like to see the language and what it actually says, but I'm generally supportive of the intent. It doesn't mean that parking doesn't get built. And I really do like the idea of cities more actively managing curbside parking because that is public space. And so that is for the public to determine how best to use it. So generally, yeah, I mean, I would like to see what the actual language says. I know we don't necessarily have all the specifics yet, but I think this could lead to some good outcomes if implemented properly.
Thoughts? Mary Beth?
I, I, yeah, I'd like to know more about it. I think to what Matt said, every neighborhood, every community is different. So completely taking away local authority makes me uncomfortable because I feel like that's what we need to be able to do is say, this locality has looked at this and this is the best thing. So lighting a fire is a good thing, but taking away the ability to decide what works in your community. I mean, we see this every time when we have put in a mixed-use development and then it spills into the neighborhood next door, and then we're dealing with that. So I think I'm not all in to remove local authority.
Laura? Laura, can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry. And I don't know where to have my camera, my camera, just something, but yeah, I, I agree. I.
I don't know why this has started, started me sort of thinking of the whole planning commission thing, you know, I, you know, how removing them from site plan approval and all that. You know, sometimes I feel like these things are, I don't know, it's, it's just odd ways to get at what, what these lawmakers want to do. I, you know, removing local authority, I've never been a fan of, and I'm not sure if other localities would be a fan of it either. I understand the point of it. So I think I'm with, you know, Erin and others who would like more information, but I, for right now, I'm sort of neutral on it. I definitely understand it and I, you know, I do not support parking minimums in general. But again, the removing the local authority piece sort of has, has me hesitating just a bit.
Agree, I, I'm not comfortable with removing local authority. That's probably the biggest thing I have about this. I also agree that lighting a fire under people, under municipalities to update their code is a good thing. And maybe the solution is to, you know, force code to be granted, to be, you know, expire so that people have to update it. But we, my concern is that we are very constrained on real estate. And so if one development makes a mistake or gets it wrong, it's really impactful on our residents. And that's where I'm struggling with this. I think maybe we need to have a lower level of required parking. We need to be more accurate in how we calculate parking. But we've already seen where charging for decoupling parking from the housing is having effects on residents. The residents are asking for parking permits, and maybe that's part of the process to say, hey, you can't park in our, the neighborhoods. It's already happening with the new developments. We're seeing complaints from the schools because people are parking from West Falls in their parking garage instead of paying the $5. Maybe that'll flush out, but I'm very hesitant to support something where it's taking away this authority from us.
Okay, so I heard neutral. Let me offer one point of view on just local authority in general. So as I talked to lots of people in the General Assembly, they keep citing a study to me about, it's like 75% of Virginians actually want the state to actually take action on housing because it's now a crisis in many people's perspectives. It's not just Northern Virginia anymore. And so they are citing, this is the reason why they're pushing so many housing reforms, whether it's statewide ADU bills, whether it's removing local authority on parking, whether it's requiring that we upzone near transit. Like there's a whole plethora of them. I expect, especially post-election, that we will get it, see a bigger volume of bills from Richmond as relates to housing because they see this as kind of their mandate to do something. I fear that if we say no to everything, we will just get steamrolled. I'd rather we have a conversation, be at the table to talk about what is reasonable, what has been proven to actually create housing, encourage supply, create more affordable housing, rather than just to hold on to this idea of local authority and say no to everything. And so having that more collaborative discussion and more nuanced, to me, is more important, knowing that that's the trend of where Richmond is going to go. And so in my mind, as I look at the spectrum of bills that are likely going to be produced, I'll cite again, upzoning or transit, the Yigby bill, yes, in God's backyard, that's buy right housing on faith-owned land with, I think we've talked to them the past two years or so, and the bill has died. Sounds like Richmond thinks that's going to pass this year. And so there's going to be a spectrum of bills that we could have positions on. In my mind, parking's probably the, one of the most benign ones because we've actually have examples across Virginia, across the US where removing parking minimums did not lead to the sky falling. For example, Charlottesville, Richmond, Newport News, Roanoke, and then a tiny little town called Anacock in Virginia have all actually eliminated parking requirements, and developers still build parking. The market is responsive for the most part. And then there's probably places outside of Virginia on this as well. So again, when you take in context the fact that there's going to be a lot of other bills coming that's housing-related, what are the ones that we might actually want to say yes to? That seems like a pretty important conversation rather than us just cling on to local authority. So I know that in the ledge package we talk about, we must retain local authority. I think there's more nuance to that that I encourage us to think about because I think saying no to all just actually removes us from having a seat at the table. On parking in particular, probably not a surprise to any of you, but I am a fan of actually reforming parking. I learned a lot more about it in the past three months, and I do think it's actually one of the most effective and low-cost reforms to create more housing supply. And so I personally would not mind us, I mean, if we were, if we were ready to take it on in January 2026, let's reform it locally first before the General Assembly does it because I do think that is a, you know, relatively easy lever. And if we don't get to it in January 26th and the General Assembly does it, I think the sky will not fall and things will be okay. Because at the end of the day, I think without mandates, data has shown that most buildings will still voluntarily build parking. The market will adjust because at the end of the day, they're probably just as incented to rent or sell those buildings as we are, rather than some archaic parking tables that we came up with in the 1970s. So if we believe housing is important, if we want to reduce traffic congestion, if we want to increase transit and bike mode, if we want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, reduce stormwater runoff, all these goals that we say are important to us, parking is actually a really great solution that tackles all of them. So I personally would support it, and if anything, I would support us doing something locally first before Richmond does it for us.
That point allows the local authority control, and you all would have to build it into your work plan for sure. And that's partly why, and, and I was clear when I was throwing ideas out for the meeting, it was just a staff perspective because I hadn't met with you all. And based on the feedback, I can report back out on Monday, but based on neutral to collaborative to local control, we could see if the Senator's willing to delay implementation to give local time or more of a collaborative study this year, do something next year, or the way the accessory dwelling unit bill, bill evolved from totally mandatory, it ended up permissive in the comprehensive plan. In the meantime, it did light fire under several localities, including the City of Falls Church, and you updated the code before the effective date of the state impact. So it could be collaborative wording, so it's not a no, it's not a yes.
So listening, I don't, I don't think you have majority support. I don't think you have the majority of council to support it. But I do think you have the majority to engage in a conversation with Senator Salim to see what sort of, kind of modifications can be made. And I, I guess it's going to come back to us at some point when that occurs. And I do want to challenge, however, as much as I support housing, the fact of the matter is that you have to control developers, otherwise they will take the cheapest way that maximizes the profits for them, and that's not building housing. So there are two sides to this coin, and I respect both sides. And I think finding a reasonable middle is what we're about. I think that's what I've heard tonight. I don't know.
Well, this is helpful. I'll report out on the meeting with the Senator. It evolves during the session, but once I have that meeting, I'll put something together for your consideration on Monday, and we'll see where that lands.
I guess on the point about how there's going to be a spectrum of housing bills, it'd be helpful to understand from him what he views the spectrum is. Because I personally, again, from what I've heard, this will be one of the most benign ones. The other ones in there, we will probably have more beef with.
And one of the things that we note in this resolution that you will adopt is this can evolve and can change and could come back to the Legislative Committee and then full council with, here's a new bill, has it evolved? Or here's some other affordable housing bills that aren't specifically referenced.
I think that's a really important point because we haven't seen our Senator or our representatives' priorities and how they match with ours and how we might adjust some of our priorities to support where they're already going to put their efforts in there, you know, their horse trading into effect to get some things passed. So, you know, in terms of where we prioritize things, I'd like to know where they both are prioritizing, how many bills they're each putting forward and where we support and how it fits with ours. So to your point of it being able to be updated, I think it's going to have to be because we don't have any, we don't have the information yet.
And we won't have it on November 24th, and then you only have one other meeting, which is already robust. And it's because they're still evolving. The, the House doesn't have any bill limits, the Senate does, and so they're still trying to decide where their priorities are. And with the change of the governor and the administration, some of the bills that were vetoed and not, or died last year, they're dusting off and bringing back. So that may be their priorities and so.
Like, for instance, I'd like to know, our representative has been a big supporter of gun, you know, adding more bills to support gun safety, gun control. And that's something that we, as a community, have expressed significant interest in for a decade, if not more. And with the change in administration and change in the composition of the House and the, and the Senate at the state level, there might be an opportunity to actually have some of these things passed. So in my mind, that elevates its priority. If we have things that we want to accomplish and we feel that we have a four-year window to accomplish those, and they might take a couple iterations, like let's put those forward as our top priorities for 2026 legislative session.
I think that's a good point, Ms. Sisk.
For one of the items I was going to touch base on, so I will just note that on line 495, we did put dangerous weapons back in. It wasn't in the ledge program the last two years because.
This was all vetoed.
Even though we were tracking it, but this time it's formally back in there. That is one area where I know Delica Simon will bring back one or two of his bills. The ghost bill, ghost guns for sure is the one they mentioned last week when I met with them.
And, but we don't have that in our top, whatever, the list of nine or something that are.
No.
We have it in the ledge overall, but I think that's something that, from my perspective, would get moved up because it would be supported by our legislators.
I'm seeing nods, so I'll move it up.
Additionally, they don't go into session until January 14th, right?
January 14th, and bills will be filed prior to that.
So we will have more information in January and be able to update this if need be.
It's sort of a chicken and egg for them. It's very helpful to know in advance what's important to the locality while they're sorting through. And generally, each of them will hold a slot for City of Falls Church. If there's a bill here, we want them to patron, so.
And to Letty's point on the housing front, when we were at VML and we were talking to all the small towns, rural, urban, everywhere in between, the one topic that was agreed upon and the one challenge and, and pain point for everybody was housing. Didn't matter if you were, had the land and had plenty of space to build it, there still wasn't enough, no matter who we talked to. So I do think that there's going to be movement at the state. There's going to be more collaboration than there has been in the past because the pressure's just so great. So just throwing that perspective out there, that I thought that was very interesting to have something that everybody was in agreement on and everybody had pain points with, from different perspectives. So it's not just, you know, urban areas.
Very true. All right, so I will report back out on the meeting with the Senator, and then we can refine that. I'll give you a draft to consider based on the. and then we can refine that. I'll give you a draft to consider based on the consensus I'm hearing today. The second item is on line one sixteen, and that's whether to endorse a split-rate local authority option. And this one, Counselor Underhill brought forward, looking at research, noting that right now it's limited to the cities of Fairfax, Pecosa, Richmond, and Roanoke, to have a differential tax rate on the value of land versus the structures built on it. The intent is to increase flexibility in your property tax system, modernizing it, but also helping to reflect local housing and land use objectives and hopefully further continuum of affordability. So in the Ledge program, I did put in the research and the write-up that Ms. Underhill provided me, and the research that showed it did increase housing production and encouraged business establishment. This is one that is new, hasn't had a lot of research, and I wanted to pass it over to Ms. Underhill because she's also been working, thinking about it further, and also talking to the city attorney. So let me let you talk in first person instead of me.
Sure. Thank you. And I just have to start out by apologizing to everyone. I'm a lot sharper at seven thirty PM than I am at eleven PM. So I do also want to start by thanking, so I have some notes here that I'll rely on. I want to thank all, all the council members and council members-to-be who met with me over the past week to go through this proposal in great detail after I reached out to every single one of you. I'm really excited about this proposal. If I could, like, wave a magic wand, I believe that this would be one of the best tax policies that we could implement. This would give us more local authority, more levers. And I think that the trash reform situation revealed that we don't necessarily have all the levers we want or need when we reduce property taxes. My primary goal here is, I, I want a way, whenever we are reducing property taxes, for the majority of that benefit, not to go to the high-dollar homes and properties, but also not to go to necessarily vacant land or underdeveloped lots. So a key part of the proposal that I have here, that I am excited about, is the exemption or the, an abatement, and we need to find the right language, on the first certain dollar amount, so that could be like ten thousand dollars or whatever, of the building assessed value. So this has the impact of reducing the burden on smaller homes, townhomes, condos, while also creating the incentive to maintain and improve properties. So there's an intent here, but not necessarily a clear legal language or framework. So given that our, our Ledge packet is already long and bulky, my suggestion is that we ask the General Assembly legal staff to look at this, to see if there's a feasible path forward with the intent of what I'm proposing. And so this could give us, in my view, some of the best levers in terms of tax policy. And I'd like to see this through as far as possible to see if we can get this local authority. And I believe asking for our General Assembly legislative staff to look at this would be a fairly soft ask, all things considered. Sally, do you have any thoughts on legal stuff that you'd like to share?
No, but the General Assembly staff would have to be asked by someone at the state level, so we would just need a partner at that level in order to accomplish that.
Do we mean the Attorney General?
Or, actually, we, the, we can ask Delegate Simon.
Right.
If we word it this way, we could ask Delegate Simon, and he's sort of anticipating something coming, and they would be supportive to ask for a study and the legislative services to look at it. I had, I did talk to Chief of Staff there on this one, and they are sensing there will be bills filed next year, next session, similar to last year, probably coming out of the Charlottesville area, and it's likely to be proposed statewide. Likely not to pass a study might be the outcome, so if you guys kind of propose that, it, it gives a couple paths forward, but it also would allow me to look at a bill that is put forward because you have it in your Ledge program.
They're two different things. So what Charles will likely is going to ask for is land value tax authority. I think what Justine is saying is, do we also have the ability to bait everyone's improvement value as well up to a certain amount? So, and that would be paired with something like a land value tax.
Yeah. And I think Charlottesville is a land value based on last year.
Right, yeah. So I'd almost like, something added on to whatever might happen with, with the state-level stuff.
And that's part of the, part of the negotiation that happens down in Richmond.
Any thoughts?
The, we'll just let your committee wasn't unanimous on this, but I, I like the power forward that Councilmember Underhill has laid out. I think it's worth further studying, but I think since taxation is so fundamental to us and our relationship to our citizens, that I wouldn't want to endorse something like this with this little notice to our citizens. So I think studying it and then bringing that back for more of a community discussion is worthwhile, in my opinion. How do others feel?
And one of the underpinnings that we didn't flag, but in the past bills and how it was kind of put here, is to give local authority so it's permissive, so that if you had the state code authority, then you could do the community work to see if you want to proceed with that.
Laura?
Hi, thanks. Yeah, that was my understanding when I spoke with Ms. Underhill, was that, you know, it does have this authority and the ability, doesn't mean we necessarily have to do it right away. In fact, I think some of the localities that have that ability are not using it right now. But it would give us the ability if we ever wanted to pull that lever to do that. I just had a quick question. If Ms. Underhill, have you heard from, have you, has anyone reached out to our Treasurer or Commissioner of Revenue about this idea of the split tax?
No room left on the tax ledger, or the, the tax bill, but she said that there's actually plenty of room, and it's not, it's not that big of a deal. You know, and so this is like something that we'd have to explore down the road later, like, is our taxing software even capable of doing this? Or is that?
Right.
So there's, there's all sorts of questions, but I feel like, you know, one step at a time. She seemed open to it, as far as I could tell, but in terms of one step at a time, we would even need to see if this would be feasible, and then we could even look at our, then we could have a community discussion, then we could look at our tax software.
Right, right.
But generally, this seemed like something she was open to. It was my sense.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And that's consistent with my conversation with the Treasurer. So sensing, I think.
I think there are a few more discussion points. Sorry. Go ahead, Erin.
Oh, yeah, I don't have much more. I'm fine so long as we're not, like, prejudging the issue, similar to Dave. I don't think we've, like, socialized this with the community at all, and I don't know that we've done, Ms. Underhill's done a lot of work on it, and so do your credit, right? Like, we're having the conversation, but that we figured out, like, at what point does this make sense, given, like, the resources that you'd have to commit to doing this, or, you know, that the Treasurer would have to, like, you know, take off X amount from the assessed value, like, at what, at what point, right, is it worth the, this is a six-dollar, you know, or sixteen-dollar savings to someone versus this is a hundred and fifty dollars in someone's pocket? And so I'm fine, you know, if it's not sort of our resources, or if, because we have to spend time explaining this, that, like, other legislative priorities, you know, we aren't able to advance in the same way. But if this is, you know, simply determining, you know, A, can we have the authority to do this, B, you know, what's the feasibility or legality of, you know, some sort of across-the-board exemption off the top, I'm okay with that.
Other thoughts? Debbie? I think I'm being repetitive, but I think it also ties into the overall legislative priorities. Where does that fit into the Senator and the Representatives? Who would have to carry it forward for us? You know, we can put, discuss whatever we decide here, like, if we want to move forward, and then have them say, well, here's where it would fit on our priorities. We have these five things for housing, these five for gun control, these ten for environmental, and then tenants' rights, or, you know, whatever those priorities are. Like, where would it fall in? Like, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we have to be pretty judicious because, as you know, when we have time with our legislators, you get ten minutes here, five minutes here, and so I think we'd be very judicious what our priorities are. I'm not sure this rises above a top ten for me, given that it's pretty early in the conversation. I guess I would go back to what Laura said is, the localities that have it, Richmond, Fairfax City, and others, why haven't they implemented it if they already have the authority? What's been the hang-up for them? And then I guess the broader question I have is, what goals are we trying to have a split tax rate address? From what I've read elsewhere, split tax rates are usually really great in localities where you have underperforming land or vacant land. If anything, I feel like we actually are probably one of the more productive land uses probably in the region. And so I guess I would like to, I mean, academically, I get why you might want to do this, and I see why an abatement might actually help some of the issues that we've had. But I guess I want to make sure that we are very clear on what goal we are trying to tackle before we come up with a solution, and then ask resources to then investigate the solution. If it were up to me, for example, I would love to actually have an uber-progressive tax rate and be able to tax, say, your three million dollar homes more, because they probably cost us more in public service, probably are bigger in terms of stormwater impacts, trade impacts, all the things that we care about, but we currently don't have the ability to tier our tax rate. But that's something that, you know, I would throw on the table of, if we are actually trying to solve these public policy goals we have, is it a split tax rate? Is it a mansion tax? Is it a tiered tax rate? Is it a different commercial versus residential rate? There's probably a whole slew of different kind of taxing levers, and I don't want to, I guess, chase down the path of a split tax rate or an abatement process if we aren't clear what policy goals we are trying to address, and actually, in agreement, that's a policy goal we want to address, and use our limited time with the General Assembly to tackle it.
I think in terms of it being a public policy goal for increased housing, it'd be, again, where does it fall in the, if there are ten different ways to address at the state legislative level, how to increase housing production, you know, where do the housing experts say this fits within, you know, because we want to do everything we can, right? So maybe that's something that's two years out, or, you know, I don't know. I think it has to be considered if it's going to be something that drives the public policy goals, right? And to your research, you think in other states it has. You know, how comparable is it? I, I don't know. But I, I do think it should be weighed in relativity to other housing, because that's what we've been talking about, like, you're building more housing, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you're incenting use of land to build housing.
I'd like to point out that most of the times it's been used has been in that way to incentivize more housing. However, it has the ability to be reversed. I think it's actually called a reverse when you do it, which incentivizes, which then helps us with that goal of, we don't want to see people taxed out of their homes, their small homes. It gives us the ability to tax heavier on the, on the building, so that, to your, to your point, Letty, we're looking at those higher-cost properties that are now getting taxed at a higher rate. It, this may not be the right solution. I would like to explore, are there other solutions? But I think that's the goal we're talking about here. But also, it seems like something, we get the authority and then we have a discussion about how to, how to use it. I, I don't think this could be implemented till FY, what, twenty-eight, or, so it's, even if we got the authority right away, it would be a while before we'd actually implement anything.
Definitely would be built into your work plan for prioritization.
So one of the things that I talked to Sally about was a sort of generalized approach to this, so asking for the, to find out from the lawyers in the General Assembly if there's a way to provide relief for the lowest-value-assessed parcels on their improvements. So that's, that was like the core question. And so that could be through the, you know, super-progressive tax rate that, Letty, you mentioned. That could be through any, I'm open to any sort of mechanism, but there's a question about legality for almost all of these mechanisms. And so that's what I, at the core of what I'd really like to explore, so that we can explore these other options and find out what's actually legal in future years.
Because right now, we only have the ability to bait taxes if you're disabled or if you're a veteran.
Yeah.
Or you're senior and low income.
Can I raise, though? I mean, I would like to have on our work plan, that since we're talking about, like, what exemptions do or don't exist, and to Art's point of, you know, is there some way to offer relief to people? You want people to invest in their homes enough that some, they have, you know, a competitive buyer that isn't simply a developer that would necessarily tear them down, or that they're saying, why would I invest in my property if someone's just going to come tear this down? And so we do have authority under state code to have some, you know, ability to, for depending on the age of a home, for people who do put improvements into that home, to have the assessed value rise, but for ten years not to have to pay the increase in assessed value, like, you get the tax relief as to the, as to the delta. And so there are things that we can be doing to try to help some of these issues, and they are very, like, marginal benefits to people because you're figuring it's only X thousands of dollars in terms of improvements, but it's something. And so, you know, again, I think we're, like, moving the right direction with this. I don't know that split tax is necessarily the way we'll go, or that there aren't going to be larger issues to trying to, like, do an across-the-board exemption, but I just want to make sure we don't lose, like, priorities, like, getting more authority to put speed cameras and wherever else in places.
I guess on that point, though, so to sum up, it sounds like, okay to study it and figure out whether we have the ability to, you know, to do this. I don't hear support to add it to the Ledge program, per se. Is that correct?
I mean, I think, yeah, I think the main thing is, this does not need to be a primary Ledge priority. The, the key thing here is to find out, like, what authority we do have so that we can have it as maybe a priority that we want to pursue in future years, but we just don't have enough information now.
It also sounds we can broaden it on the leverage. One of these things, this is like a perfect thing to be in here, lower priority, but just ask that it be forwarded to the Housing Commission for study, and then that gets your legal review as well.
Yeah, okay.
I guess on the point of, sorry, go ahead, Mary Beth.
No, but, that's right.
But I was just trying to sum up, kind of, one of the comments I heard.
I was just going to say, I appreciate Ms. Underhill bringing it to our attention. I had never, I didn't know anything about it before we started to talk about it, and I do think it's worth further study. Not convinced that it actually is the thing, but I think it's definitely worth further study.
So I guess on the point, we've all talked about different priorities. So the Ledge program right now is twenty-nine pages. It would be helpful to have a clear, like, here are our top five or ten. And some of them aren't on there, for example, like, obviously in light of the federal cuts, like, the social safety net is going to be really important. And so that would be actually my number-one ask of Richmond, is for them to step up and actually help with that. I don't know what the local impact of that can be, but I don't know where that is on our list. And so.
General, federal.
Yeah. And so, like, for me, that I would like to see actually that highlighted above even traffic safety. Like, as much as we talk about traffic safety, like, we're going to have some really, like, hit and impacted, like, to our budget if we need to plug Medicaid. Hopefully Richmond's thinking of that, but that's something that should be number one, in my opinion, on our list. And right now, I don't know where it is. Metro funding's probably number two on the list, right?
Yeah, and it's more into the budget, but also this discussion helps because I can reprioritize where you want focus that we're messaging.
I think that's true, too, in terms of, like, state housing support, because in looking at all the things that we were saying, you know, that we would want the state to do, or to address affordability, like, we were just talking about all those sunsetting units, and a lot of those are tied to the initial issuance of the low-income housing tax credits. And so there was that bill last year that may have not passed, but whatever it was, right, in order to try to get, like, the state to actually do more, to infuse cash or resources, or whatever it is, into trying to extend or renegotiate, or whatever, the, the properties that had the initial benefit of the initial term of the low-income housing tax credit, since it's an issue for, like, everyone nationwide.
Yeah, I raised that actually with Virginia housing. Like, we all have this thirty-year wave of Lytec expirations, and so rather than us trying to solve the fields on our own, like, maybe the state should step up. So like, that would be top five on the list for me, and I don't know, again, where that falls, because there's a lot that hopefully Virginia is willing to do versus individual localities. And so I would encourage us that, out of all these priorities, and maybe others have others that we could, you know, add to our top five or top ten, what do we think are, like, elevator speeches versus, you know, we've repeated a lot of other priorities in the past in here. Dave?
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm fine with your additions. I would add electronic enforcement and gun legislation, metro, I think Medicaid funding, and state support for, what, non-lapsing of, however, Councilmember Flynn expressed it. So I think we've got a pretty good consensus on that, from what I've heard.
I think it could, you know, encapsulate that all in one with social services, and the state supporting, right? So they're supporting healthcare, housing.
You've got Medicaid, SNAP, housing I might do separately, but you also have the CSA match, which is totally state, where they're running it down to impact locals. So we can do that for sure. It's in the ledge program, I'll just consolidate and move it up front.
Laura, you have your hand up again.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this, Ms. Muster, you did an excellent job. This is so comprehensive, but I think, as you said, I think as we've all said, it's so comprehensive and they're, you know, it's hard to figure out what our top priorities are. And I don't know if we've ever done sort of like an executive summary as sort of a cover page to say, you know, these, I, I just worry that it's so comprehensive or is it going to get lost, you know, are, are the aides, you know, is everyone going to be reading through this down in Richmond? I don't know. So that, that was one thought I had was sort of an executive summary. I agree with Mr. Snyder. For me, the WAMADA funding, the gun control piece are very important to me. And so I, I would, so I would just suggest that, but you know, maybe if we could all sort of rally around five or six priorities, I think that would help it from, you know, things getting lost. I did have one other question. I know that Ms. Muster, you still have questions for us, but in terms of the, there is a lot of talk, a lot in the ledge package about making up for that grocery tax revenue that was pulled out. Is that, could that go away with the new, with the change in leadership in Richmond?
Will be they have to put it back in the budget and fund it. And so even though the last budget projections for the state look promising, we need to address Medicaid, SNAP and so forth. So I don't necessarily expect it to change this session, but could be next. Right now I have five top priorities and line 108 of the ledge program is Virginia priorities. It just doesn't have any in there because we had all these bills to talk about, so now I'll be able to reorganize it. The only two other things that I'd like to mention quickly, Mayor, just for your all's awareness, is gas leaf blower ban is still in here and the ESC has brought it up. And I'd like to keep it there in case something pops up. Senator Saleem may or may not patron it this year because of the priorities, so he hadn't sorted it out, but it's something the community cares about, trying to administer this under the noise ordinance as we've been informed by the city attorneys, pretty challenging and the actual enforcement by our officers even more so. So I'd like to leave it in there just so that if the bill might happen, we can progress. And the other thing is I did get a recommendation from Mr. Coyle again this year, as he did last year, looking at rent guidance for increases. And he gave back the example of Rockville City for voluntary rent control guidance. It's not mandatory, but it kind of incentivizes. And so I wanted to mention that as a general, another tool for affordable housing that I just got today, so you all haven't seen it, but I might put it into the sort of affordable housing bucket tool and highlight it as a change so you would see it for Monday. Those were the main things I had pulled out the flag for you, but I do want to summarize quickly and then see other comments. What I have for your top priorities would be the safety net, the social services, Medicaid, SNAP, CSA, CSB, WAMADA is another one, electronic safety enforcement is another, housing, Lytec and other tools, and gun control are the five I was hearing. This will necessarily be general because we don't know what the bills are going to be, just like we don't even know what our own delegation's doing. So I don't want to get too specific, but general theme enough that we can comment on it.
On line 93 in the federal section, you referenced HR1, the big beautiful bill. Can, can we strike big beautiful bill please and just say HR1 passed in May 2025?
Yep.
Okay. And then.
As long as you all know now what HR1 is because a lot of people didn't even know what the bill was.
Second, I just need to let everyone know, I, in my capacity as a school employee, have been working with Senator Saleem and Delegate Simon on the IB bill for the past year. So that's in the FCCPS program and it's, but just so you know, I have been going back and forth with them and they, they know that that's a priority of the schools and a priority of mine. So I, I don't think we need to put it in this program, but I just need you to know that it's there and it's a conversation that we've had numerous times. Senator Saleem has sent it back and forth for legislative writing and at this point he thinks it needs to be discussed in committee and gone back and forth because what we're asking is that the IB program, anyone who attempts the IB program qualifies for an advanced diploma and therefore you don't have to have PE and personal finance, driver's ed, and you would still get the advanced diploma. It's mostly beneficial to kids that come to our schools or any school and start the IB program in 11th grade because they haven't done all those classes in 10th grade. But there are some people in the General Assembly who are, you know, feel very passionately about driver's ed, so.
Personal finance.
And personal finance and PE and other things. So, so he, so it's, it, the bill is to a point where it's as written as it can be and then it will come up in the Education Committee.
Yeah, and I see that on page five of seven.
Yeah, yeah.
I will incorporate that in and your practice is to incorporate by, you don't need to call it out.
Yeah, you don't need to call it out in here. I just want you to know that they have been having conversations with the city, the schools about this when we talk about things that they're already dealing with.
I'd like to throw a number six out there, and I know we incorporate the ESC's request by reference, but again, if we're looking at what changes we can make, given the new governor and House and Senate structure, we may have more success with some of our environmental, you know, bills that we'd like to have. I don't know that, for me personally, you know, that gas leaf blower is, you know, something to talk about, but it's not the most impactful thing within our environmental legislative package. So if we're looking at, you know, safety net for people, WAMADA, housing, safety, gun control, I'd also like to add environmental legislation because that gets out some state funding too for stormwater, for, you know, the ability to, even when we're talking about tree canopies later on, the ability to make some decisions or requirements for the single family homes, like to retain water, to retain tree canopy, to not cut down, you know, all those things. So encapsulated under environmental is another top six. I think we'd be remiss in not having that as a priority for our community.
So coming in not knowing anything, I'd say keep those, the priorities area very short with each one of those just because the lack of it right now, I was like very confused. One question I have though is, we're always talking about stormwater. Is there anything in here related to that? Is it something that's in there? Is, is there something?
Yeah, we do have under the budget and the funding for stormwater to keep the funding going for SLAF and WGIF, which I'm drawing a blank on what the acronym stands for right now, sorry. But yes.
That doesn't sound like something that would be a top priority.
It, it's a standard one and it's in the VML ledge program, so we'll have that pushed.
Justine?
So just a couple things. One, so Cindy, you mentioned adding in some additional things, but not necessarily that are priorities, but lower down. Would you be able to send like, I guess, the text before it ends up in the packet? Could you email us, I guess, whatever additions you were planning to add in? I, like, I, I just don't want to be up, you know, on the dais next week and being like, whoa, what are, what are these other things that suddenly ended up in here?
You will definitely, I will work to have it in advance, but you'll definitely have it in the packet on Thursday in advance with the gray highlights, but I'll see what I can do to pull it out earlier.
Okay. Yeah, that, that would be helpful. And then the other thing was, so you mentioned, we mentioned the five priorities. I, I took notes, I was trying to write it down as fast as possible. What was it that we had under, listed under safety specifically?
Increasing electronic enforcement.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought.
And that would be your speed red camera and your stop signs, which is in there now. I'll just move it up to the front.
Okay. Yeah, I guess like part of that would be like maybe also including the fine increase too.
We can do the fines too.
Aaron?
A 10-second thing, which is in looking at this and we included the cable undergrounding of the utility lines, but I don't know that we incorporated the ensuring like redundancy to municipal buildings, that we've had that ongoing conversation about what pressures can we potentially seek to put on Dominion, for example, of needing to do things when we're running into recurrent problems. And so I don't know if there's a way to capture that. If it had just fallen off the list because we had talked about it along the way, but then hadn't incorporated it here. So more of a, just a takeaway, is there some way we can get it in there in the undergrounding or whatever else conversation?
Yeah, that one, one, we're successfully working it, but two, a lot of that's going to come under the SEC and regulatory versus the General Assembly. There is some overlap, but I can look to put some language in there somewhere.
Okay. Final ones. I think we mentioned these other ones. We had our top five. I think there's some strategy, six, sorry, environment, I was a six.
Six.
And we can just make them alphabetical. We don't have to like rank order them if it's helpful, if we are just going to limit it to six. I do think that there is some strategy in actually trying to coordinate with our neighbors on what else they may also be pushing for. So for example, tree canopy, we spent a whole lot of time in this meeting talking about tree canopy. I'm pretty sure that's on Arlington's list as well as Vienna's list and probably someone else's list. And so it might make sense to think about like, do we ask for that, you know, in one of our top 10s because we think it might get more momentum because there's regional collaboration or support for it. Likewise, tenant rights is one that's been always on my list every year, especially as our mix is now higher in multifamily. We've had people come to us telling us about rodents and mold issues and us being pretty powerless and not being able to do anything. I would like that to be on the list. I'm pretty sure other jurisdictions that have higher concentration of multifamily would like to see stronger tenant protections as well.
I do have tenants.
But I would just say, is it in our top 10, for example, to elevate it because we know that other jurisdictions may have it. I also have leaf blowers and underground lines as kind of the others to round it out. On rent control, I think you mentioned a suggestion or we called it rent guidance or whatever the language was. I think that's a pretty slippery slope. I would not support it because I think the data has been very clear since the 1970s that rent control actually has the opposite effect. So while it is a good like interim feel-good solution to kind of slow rent growth down, it actually discourages new investment. And so I would be very, very wary of putting that in there, something that we would endorse, even if it is a good short-term feel-good fix.
I was just going to say, when we were looking at the affordability dashboard before, you know, and there are like studies that, well, whatever, I won't go to like, you know, public shaming or whatever, but, you know, there can be benefits to not having guidance, but having an afford, one of those blocks on the affordability dashboard to actually track, you know, like what are the rent, the average rent increases in our buildings year over year so that people can see like, oh, something went up 15% year over year, right? And the community can have a reaction to that, you know, and, and you have kind of community pressure even if you don't have like formal guidance. So.
Transparency is great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all for that. I'm just not for government intervening and telling people what their rent should be.
We have plenty of priorities, so I will just note that and if we see something in legislation in Richmond, I'll let you know. On the regional front, I do want to let you know that our Northern Virginia ledge liaisons meet regularly and we're currently sharing everybody's draft, but everybody's in the draft mode. But your top priorities are pretty consistent. I will say the reality is we react to what bills, so it's helpful for me to know what your top, I have eight right now. ABC order is helpful because I have to figure out some way to list it, so thank you, Mayor.
The top 20.
The reality is we're going to be working whatever comes up, so.
And we appreciate how well you track it all and keep us informed.
And I'm pleased. And I think I've told the ledge committee, but I'll make sure all of council knows, we have two interns this year. Alex is returning for his third year and Julia's, his brother, who's a sophomore, is joining him. And so they've actually both helped me track what's before you.
I think you should set up some competition between the two of them, who could do more.
As long as I have the one continuing next year when Alex heads off to college, but they're both very excited and they probably would do that because they're both on mock trials and debates, so they'd probably get into that.
Okay, we still have consent in the closed session. Thank you for the very robust discussion on this, Cindy. We look forward to the updates.
I appreciate the 11:30 discussion.
Okay. Consent?
Any questions on consent?
No.
All right, closed session?
Yeah.
We'll be here before midnight.
We just need some motion. Do you have the motions in front of you? We need to make the motions, please, before you go anywhere.
Yes, Cindy, Charlie, somebody needs to move this.
They're going to go up to oak.
I have two different motions. Which one do I? So not this one then?
Yeah, that one is the closing of the session.
I have two different motions.
This one is your coming out and directing an open session, isn't it, Sally?
No.
I guess the bigger one?
The bigger one's fine?
No, it's the same to me.
Upon a motion made by.
Hiscott.
And second by.
Underhill.
And passed by a vote of the City Council, Council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-371A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel to consult with a city attorney regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney, specifically legal advice concerning pending ordinance TO25-17, which would remove authority for the review and approval of site plans from the Planning Commission and assign it to the Planning Director. Connolly?
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
We're going in at 11:29.
And Ms. Downs, you should have a separate teams link to go into for the closed session.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, we are back on, so let's come out of closed. This is the motion to come out of closed session upon a motion made by council member.
Underhill.
And seconded by council member.
Connolly.
Connolly, and passed by a vote of city council, council resumed or reconvened in open session. Connolly.
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Sean Siskup?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Okay, coming out time is 12:04, this is a certification now. Upon a motion made by...
Siskup.
And seconded by...
Underhill.
And passed by affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was certified that one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open requirements, and two only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened heard discussed or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Connolly.
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Sean Siskup?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Hardy, yes. Okay, if there's no more business, let's adjourn at 12:05. Good night all, thank you.
Night everyone.